Okay, I'm going to call a meeting to order since it's 5:30.
I saw 5:29.
Oh, well, that says 5:31. Okay, what time is that?
That means Lloyd wants a minute.
I have 5:29 also.
I have half right now.
Okay. It's still 5:29. Okay, it's 5:30. I have, let's call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Breeden. Mayor Breeden, here. Mr. Ammon.
Here.
Mr. Martin. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
We have four present. Mr. Mauer is not here. We do have a quorum.
He says it starts at six, doesn't it?
5:30.
Okay. All right, so then we, approval of the agenda, please. Somebody?
Somebody? Motion approval.
Second.
Please vote.
I forget which is one.
One.
One is yes.
Yes.
Uh-oh, we lost the screen.
It says above the, see that thing on the top? It tells you.
Okay, I'm trying to press it and nothing is coming up.
There.
Four yeses, one absolute. Mr. Mauer, motion carries.
Okay, all right. Is there any public comment on closed session? The closed session will be with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subparts A, D2, and E3. One case. Any comments? Okay, then we will go into closed session.
Okay. I've already got it. And I said if anybody ever could give, will you text me if it looks like they're losing? Okay. Is Eddie here? Do you see Eddie? Where is he? I don't see him. Oh, there he is.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order, please. And I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but first of all, I would like to share something with you so you understand what's happened. Our city... Sorry, is that what you were waving at me for? Sorry. Our city manager's father was burned in a terrible fire. He was taken off life support just a little while ago, and he is with his family. And I'm asking for prayer, and I asked Reverend Thomas and former councilman Thomas if he would come and pray, and also for Mike Cash, who was in a horrible motorcycle accident and is going to be, going to be undergoing tremendous pain and maybe surgery, more surgery, for nine to 10 months. Also, I'm asking that we pray for the city and pray for our community. So after I say the pledge, please remain standing and we'll have Eddie come up and speak. Please put your hand over your heart and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we bow our heads in prayer? Father, we thank you for having the relationship and the love of a God that loves us so much. And even in our hurts, we pray for the Strand family. Father, give them strength, give them courage to walk through this very landmine of life, that they'll be able to allow their emotions and feelings to gravitate towards you and grab, and grab strength from you, as well as the Cash family. Father, cover them with your blood. We love them. They are a vital part of this community, and we love what they do and what they stand for in this community. And not only for them, Father, we pray for this council. We pray for the decisions and the items that are on the agenda tonight, that you would get the glory, that they will continue as a council to seek your face and your wisdom and your guidance, because this is a great community, and we're so happy that we have the privilege of living and loving and being a part of this community. And then, Father, finally, we thank you for the staff that is here, the staff that represents this community, the first responders that respond to all of the various crises that exist in this community. Bless the people that are here today, that will voice their opinions, share their hearts and share their concerns, that whatever we come to, that it will not divide us or separate us, that we will grow strength from each other. This we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. The city attorneys report, please.
Madam Mayor, City Council met in closed session for a special meeting. Item was described in the special meeting agenda. Direction given, no final action taken.
Thank you. The next item in the agenda is presentation. So council, if you'll join me up front, you can see we have a lot of presentations to make, so please join us. I ask Mike to stand here with me so that we can make the presentation for 30 years of service to the community. So Mike, if you would go ahead and read that.
This is recognition of service. This certificate is awarded to Tony Brown in recognition of 30 years of service.
It's a long time to be a cop, huh?
Thank you. Did you have anything to say?
No.
Then let's do this together. Okay, get them in the middle. Okay. Y'all want to come up? Because we're all doing this together. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. The next one I'm going to make, because these two were not able to be here tonight. Trish Rockwell, for five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest, and for Kelly Morrison, for five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. So I'm going to hold this and we'll present them later. So the rest, please come up.
So next, we have a recognition of service to Justin Dampier for 20 years, commitment to the Ridgecrest PD. I would like to say thank you for your 20 years of service to the, to the city, but also thank you for your 20 years of loyalty and commitment to the Ridgecrest PD, because I think for you to be here that long and to be staying with us is a, it's a very recognizable feat in itself. So thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Then we have a five-year recognition of service. The certificate is awarded to Fred Booth in recognition of five years of service. Fred?
Thank you for your job all the time.
Okay, so I'm doing Micah Lloyd. Micah actually volunteers for us, and he has volunteered thousands of hours over the years, but he's recognized for doing five years of volunteer service for the police, and we are very appreciative of all your volunteer work that you've done for us. So thank you.
All right, next up is recognition of service. This is awarded to Timothy Plunkett in recognition of five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest.
Okay, the next item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on items that do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Okay, who's up first, please?
He volunteered me to be first. I'm Tricia Siegel. I live at 409 Ashton Street and discovered something after the first big rain that we had, and after the subsequent rains that were flooding this outside of my house. I was lucky enough to get gutters and drains in my yard, but I still discovered, had to have that even redone a little bit, because I discovered that I'm getting an inordinate amount of rain from my neighbor's yard on that side of my house. And I went and talked with the city. There is no ordinance or code that requires my neighbor to try to abate any of that water coming. It's coming from the roof, and it's coming from the rain. It comes down, heads into my yard. I can't catch it. The only thing I can do is put drains in the ground to try to divert it out to the front, which I've done, and I'm hopefully that the next rain will prove that that's all successful. But I thought that was odd, that there was no, there was no code, no ordinance that required someone to, like I say, abate anything coming from their yard into my yard. The other thing that was a surprise was when I called my insurance company. I didn't have any damage. I sandbagged the side of my house. It was ankle-deep in water. So I sandbagged the side of my house, was able to not have any damage, but my insurance company says they don't pay for anything coming from outside like that. And I have USAA, so it's not a fly-by-night company. I talked to FEMA. I can get FEMA coverage, but unless other people in my neighborhood have damage also, they would not pay. And since it's, it's hard to separate how much water comes down naturally and what's coming from his house, I doubt that his insurance company would pay either. I mean, I don't want to have damage, so that's the whole reason I've put, right now, about $4,200 into gutters and drains in my yard. But I thought it was just very odd, and I, and the next time it rains, I might still have water issues if his hot tub goes south and comes into my yard. You know, what happens there? I mean, so the abatement officer suggested I come and just mention to you all that, right now, I have no legal recourse and no insurance that would pay for any damage for water coming in from my neighbor.
What was your address again? Sorry?
409 Ashton Street. And on my other side of my house, I realize I have a lot of water going to that neighbor's yard, so I'm going to have the guys that did my gutters put some drains in the yard to catch as much of my water as possible to take it down to the street before it goes into his yard. But like I said, there's, there's nothing that requires me to do that. I think that's just something, but that's, it's a lot of money, and not everybody can afford that. And, and if I went to my neighbor, I mean, I've, I've talked to them a little bit. They're new to the area, and if I said, and they know I've had some issues, sandbagging, the water tends to go around the sandbags. So that's not necessarily a great help. I'm on a slight incline. That doesn't help either. But just to let you know that we, we don't have anything to help with that.
Are there any other neighbors in your area that are undergoing that same issue?
You know, I haven't asked, but I realized that on the, across the street from me, I know that the people there, the people behind them, I think there's like a, they're higher. So I thought, wow, you know, if, if they had an issue with water coming into their yard, they would have the same problem that I do. This has been an unusual year. We may never have another year like this, or it could be the new norm. So I'm, yeah, I'm concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Ellis. Did you need an address? 709 Sidnor, Ridgecrest. I have a, I have some books for the council members and the city manager. I know you probably aren't allowed to accept these, but I would appreciate it if you take them, and if you can't keep them, please pass them along to someone else. They're all the same book.
Thank you, Chris.
I didn't give you different ones.
Is this something you use?
It is. So I'm probably going to bounce all over the place, because I have a really bad case of adult ADD, as those who know me might, might realize. The book that I provided is called Bring Out the Best in People. It's something I use at work. Talks about the power of positive reinforcement. It also talks about other types of reinforcement, but ultimately, what you want to be doing is, is working towards positive reinforcement on everything when it comes to your, your people and in your relationships. So one of the, I don't want to bounce around too much, so I'm going to go right to the guts of this. One of the things that I've seen at some of the meetings is a propensity to thank a lot of people, and I don't want to take away from what happened earlier tonight, because I think it's wonderful, and I feel very fortunate to be a part of this community. Fantastic people, and I really commend all of you for stepping up and taking your time to be of public service, because it's not something that's easy to do. But on the other side of things, we need to be careful that we are reinforcing the behaviors that we want to have more of, and eliminating the behaviors through the other means that are described in that book, such as punishment, penalty, and negative reinforcement to, and then replacing that, that behavior that you don't want with the behavior you do, and then immediately going into a mode of positive reinforcement. And so my concern is, is that we may have a tendency towards reinforcing a behavior that we don't necessarily want more of. And I feel like I've seen that in a few city council meetings. And so that kind of leads me to the, the gist of what I wanted to talk about tonight, and keep me on the clock. What do I have? Two, two minutes and 12 seconds left? I can do this quickly. One of the things I tell my people all the time is, know what you don't know. Meaning, if you don't know something, don't try and fake your way through it. Don't, just say you don't know it, and then, and then defer to people who do know something, rather than deferring to somebody else who doesn't know anything about what you're, what you're talking about. I'm sorry to say it that way. It is, it may not come out exactly the way that I intend it, but at, at the end of the day, none of us expect you to know everything about what's going on in the city. But what we do expect you to do is follow up and, and learn what you don't know about before you make a decision on it. And hopefully, that's the case in, in most cases. So, but, you know, a few things I, I would ask of you along that line is, you know, as we move forward, you know, you, unfortunately, I, you probably won't see me any, at any more of these meetings, because I have other things to do. And so my time is better spent doing other things. But there are some things that, that I would expect, and that is that the, the city council strive to continue to improve the services that the city provides. Now, I realize that your one and only job is to manage the city manager and set goals and objectives. Now, I'm not sure that I'm aware of what the goals and objectives of each of you are. I would like to have a better feel for the long-term vision as a, as a citizen of, of the city. So it would be great if at some point we could publish those things so where the public can see it, so as we go into elections going next year, people won't just arbitrarily go out there in a negative way. So if we could do something like that between now and election time, that would be great. And then the other, oh, there we go. And then the other thing is, let's be mindful that we all need to work together to be successful. None of us are going to be successful without each other, and pulling on opposite ends of the rope will leave us doing nothing. And that's not a position I'm comfortable being in. I want to see the city do better. I may be on my own. I don't believe that that's the case, but if we can all commit to working together on these things, and I realize there's people out here, and I've heard them speak, that don't think that public funds should be used to improve the city and things like that, and maybe I'm not characterizing it the right way, but I'll tell you, I'm one person who is willing to not use public funds to, to improve what's going on in this area. And you're going to see that happen over the next two to three years, and I'm asking you for your support as we try and do some better things here. And I appreciate you giving me the extra time, and everybody in the long line indulging me.
Thank you.
So have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
My name is Christopher Gray. I live in Farragut Street. I'm here representing Indian Wells Valley Youth Baseball. I handed out the gist of what I'm going to try to talk about in five minutes. It goes to the meeting last week about the proposed fees associated with youth sports in the community. I had, after I left with the budget, and I did some homework, went through it, found some things that concerned me. I put this together, so this is all based on what I received from the city. The splash pad budget was $55,288. We're charging baseball to use the, we were proposing to charge the baseball to use the fields. I'm wondering why we're not trying to recoup money from other public places such as that. They have a budget of $3,500 for fresh water at our facility. That is only used for drinking fountains and toilets, so it seems extremely generous. Why doesn't it show us reimbursing the, the league or the city for utilities at that complex? It, it shows a cost, but it doesn't show the fact that youth baseball reimburses the city. There's $13,500 budget for utilities at the complex, which were there nine months out of the year, so we're paying the utilities. So if that was for your portion for the three months we're not there, I don't understand why. I actually was told yesterday that that was just our portion. We have an $11,000 budget to maintain a closed facility, which is Penny Pool. Leads me into, let's skip the, the high school sports fee, because I heard they do. So there was a $22,000 increase in salaries for the Parks and Recs office, two people, next year, and another $16,000, last year, and another $16,000 this year. It's a little bit concerning. Just in salary, that's $38,000 for two employees over, over that time period, including benefit increases. This comes to an increase of $70,403 in two years' time. That's the, you know, the, the cost of paying them more money. The recreational, recreation programs personnel, which is 8.33 people, increased $38,974 over the same two-year time period. I, to me, is, it's, it's troubling. Preschool personnel is only going up $3,000 in a two-year period of time. I don't know how many people that is. That was my question. Is that one person? If so, I mean, it's $1,500 a year. The group of nine individuals that maintain the parks only see a total increase of $19,000 for salary and benefits from last year to now. In addition to being severely unequal distribution of the pay increases, even when accounting the differences in the current salaries of the respective positions, the huge salary increases for two people in the Parks and Rec seems outrageous, considering normal pay increases for NOCD employees, the largest employer in the area, are on average 0% to 2%. Not everybody receives substantial raises every year. I, I broke down your, your budget based on personnel and, and total budget for each complex. It's in a chart. This is, again, straight off the, the budget sheet that was given to me. $71,018 budget for the youth sports complex includes a partial payment of $30,000 for a lift that's going to be used between Public Works and, and Parks and Rec. He just said he had to, had to find a place to put it, so that's where he put it. It also includes a $13,500 for utilities, in which baseball organization pays, as well as an extremely generous $3,500 estimate for fresh water. So the actual budget to maintain the fields is $24,000. Of that, $19,000 is employees, so if you take out the labor costs, they, you spend $5,000 a year proposed in equipment to maintain that. We've, why I feel the fees unfair to us is, over the last few years, before we got displaced last year, and for the remodel, we host tournaments, bring in approximately 120 families plus, 120-plus families into town, stayed at our hotels, and ate at our restaurants. I did a quick, just, I said $100 a day per family, which I think is being extremely conservative for food, is $24,000 in, in one day. But that, I mean, we all know breakfast, lunch, and dinner, $100 for a family. That's, that's going to be tough to do. With the addition of the hotels and gas purchased in town, I, I say 50,000 to 60,000. I think, in, in my gut, it's more closer to 100K, is the revenue that's taxable brought into the city of Ridgecrest during these tournaments that we host. In addition to the local revenue that we bring in for the tournaments, all of our parents, you know, they have to buy equipment, uniforms, helmets, bats, and all that is additional revenue that's taxed here in, in the, the city of Ridgecrest, as well as what the league buys. There's also more in there about the cost that we spent. I don't want to cut into everybody else's time, but if you would continue reading and can keep that in consideration when we discuss for the budget. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Chief McLaughlin. My name is Jim Simmons. I live over on East Robertson Road. A few minutes ago, we were honored by noting the service of some of our city employees. I wanted especially to point out to you, in case you have not heard, that Reserve Officer Lloyd, the other night, on my street at 2:00 in the morning, alone and in the dark, arrested a, a felony warrant suspect for narcotics sales, who'd been drawing a lot of ne'er-do-wells to our neighborhood and trafficking that was kind of scary to a lot of the people that live on the street. We don't often get a chance to salute these guys, but I want to make sure you knew that we very much appreciate the efforts, Chief, of we very much appreciate the efforts, Chief, of Officer Lloyd. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Stafford, IDBB Football President. Chris pretty much nailed the number, so I won't say the same things again. I'll go ahead and talk on what our services offer. The three organizations that were called into the meeting was football, baseball, and soccer. Each one of us spoke on behalf of close to 200 kids on average, so 600 kids. And what I've noticed is, most clubs have their own group of kids. They got soccer kids, got baseball kids, got football kids. So we can equate that to 600 kids. Things that those clubs offer, I know on behalf of football, we offer physical fitness, athletic education, art of winning and losing, teamwork, determination, sportsmanship. Other services we've provided are food for players that they don't eat. We've taken a cleat donation program where players and families donate their cleats at the end of the season so that they'll have them for the next season. Through our sponsors, Dr. Snow, they actually are doing free dental exams now for us. It's a mouthpiece program that they put together. And some of these kids have not had a true dental exam and probably may not for years to come. I saw so many kids end up with braces at the end of the season, and the frustration was they'd had to take time off for practice and their mouth hurt, and, you know, but that's aside from the point. But they're getting that as a service as well through our program. Educational assistance. A lot of our coaches will work with the teachers. I spent hours with principals last year. We do our best to interact with these kids to help them with anything that they're having problems with, either grade-wise, homework-wise. I've done study halls, all the extra stuff to help keep these kids on the field, which keeps them out of the streets. Transportation. Many of the coaches and other parents will give these kids transportation to and from practices, games, which are out of town at times. We offer entertainment for the youth where it's limited. We hear so many times that there's nothing for the youth in this town, and I can't seem to catch a minute to myself. So look at these programs and consider that there is entertainment for these kids. We offer it. We assist the community with cleanup. Last year, we worked the Penny Pool fundraiser. It's just a matter of a group of kids getting together, wearing their jerseys, going around, picking up trash, and putting back into the community. We occupy the fields that would most likely be vacant if we weren't using them, to the extent that we use them, which turns into a vacant lot, more dead, more expense to recoup should the city ever decide to recoup. We provide a material for field repair. Just recently, I had to clean graffiti off the conixes, which are, so they're our responsibility. But in that, we also painted the city's trash cans, just, we had extra paint, helped them out. It's the idea of the co-op that we want to operate under with the city, not, we can't keep taking from these programs. Big question is, can the city absorb this, all these things that we do? Should these programs wash up, not be able to afford to continue to operate? We're currently at $300 a player. An increase in fees will put us at $350. We lost players from 250 to 300, and we're going to lose more if we have to raise from 300 to 350. And the ones that are affected by it aren't the ones that can afford it, it's the ones that really need to be out there playing that can't afford the $300 to play football. And that goes for every other program out here is going to have to increase their rates to maintain this. So just some things I want to ask the community to pay attention to and the City Council. We're talking about adding a median, which will create more maintenance costs for this Parks and Recs department. It just seems kind of a wrong path to take, raises maintenance costs. And with that, with raises, I don't want to get into who should, who shouldn't get a raise, but I will campaign for the Parks and Rec maintenance crews. They're out there doing their best to repair. I've heard complaints that they haven't had a raise for so long. Well, let's consider giving them a raise. Maybe we're too top-heavy right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. My name is Scott Miller, and I am here as a private citizen, not for anybody I may or may not work for or I may or may not represent. Just a friendly reminder that our council, a few years ago, voted and approved an MSA. That MSA is still in full effect and valid. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Jason Tarp. I'm the owner of American Custom Lifts. My wife and I moved our family and most of our business from San Diego to Ridgecrest three years ago. My wife Shannon grew up here, and I fell in love with the small town and lighter traffic. We sell nothing locally, but employ a local staff of five. We just hired two additional employees, bringing the total to seven. Just in the last 60 days, we delivered our car lifts to Saudi Arabia, Switzerland, Norway, and Iceland. This is on top of the business throughout the United States and Canada. We build a home within the city limits. We want Ridgecrest to be better, to be a better city. To do this, the City Council needs to work harder to attract and keep businesses. The easiest way you can do this is to approve the casino. The casino will bring jobs, entertainment, and other businesses. I've seen firsthand how a casino can add value to a city. In San Diego, we had several outlining casinos, and they offered a lot to the local community. This included events, concerts, Fourth of July fireworks, and sponsoring of local charities. My other example is the Maryland Live Casino near BWI Airport. This area was transferred from empty land to a thriving tourist area that boosts more than 15 hotels. I understand Ridgecrest is much smaller, and these examples are different. But this casino is what we need to solve a lot of problems. I also understand that some bad could come, but the greater good will be served. In my previous career, I was a hotel operator and developer. The current hotels are busy during the week with base business. The casino will provide more weekend business, creating more balance for these hotels, and ultimately, higher occupancy. This will cause more hotel developers to want to build hotels in Ridgecrest. The city is going to collect more in taxes from these hotels and other spending throughout the city. This money will help fix roads, upgrade our parks, pay for our police and fire, and improve our quality of life. The City Council needs to get behind this casino and any other new business that wants to come to Ridgecrest. I would like to hear that the City Council helps businesses get through the red tape and plan check. All I hear is how city employees make it hard for businesses. This needs a change, and this casino is the right step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Ash, and you have my address on file. And then you know me. I'm not going to repeat what he just said, but he pretty well summed up what I was going to say. But I will add to it. Newspaper reported during the last budget hearing that there was a 72% increase in sexual assault reports to the police department. And then the other thing is, we're having problems with the sports, and you want to charge user fees. I don't have a horse in this race. My kids are grown. I'm not the most sport-minded person, but I do understand the need for youth services within the community. If we want to head with this casino development, that would bring in much-needed income that could fund those services, because they're first looking at an increase of 72%, a reported sexual assault, that's not good. And we're going to have to find out why that is happening and how to mitigate that. Sexual assault affects all people, men, women, can be by somebody you know, you don't know. But it's something we need to address as a community, and then again, like I said, about the youth. And my final thought on the casino is, the MSA, I was going to look over today and didn't have time, but in good faith, the Timbisha Band has worked with the city officials to work out an agreement. And things came to a halt because there was a snafu with the federal government. The city council, when that point came, could have offered to extend escrow and to work with the Timbisha, which they did not do. But I hope in the future, you will continue to work with them in a positive manner so we can get this casino built and put in our community. And you also know how I feel about how government should not legislate morality. The casino is a legal business, has every right to open doors here. It is not the council's purpose to establish what is right and what is wrong, and what is moral and what is not. It is its job to make sure that businesses are placed in appropriate locations. And I did mention online and Facebook about if you have a school, and let's say you wanted to build a bar, you could put that bar within 100 feet. You can zone things, but you can't legislate them out based on what your personal feelings are about that business. And as a community, I think the majority of the people would support the casino, and it would bring in economic development, and it would help pay for the much-needed services that we need. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stan Rotora. I am not a Parks and Rec proponent. I never have been, and I probably never will be. On the other hand, I do have to draw the bar somewhere. And frankly, you're below it right now. I think it's a matter of priorities we're talking about. It's very simple. Do we want the kids on the sports fields? Or do we want them doing drugs, drinking alcohol, joining street gangs, et cetera? I think it's a no-brainer. We're only talking $17,000 out of a total budget of $14 million. I would like to suggest that you just go out, find the money in the budget, tell the staff to go out and do it. We've spent a number of hours discussing $17,000. At some point in time, you got to say, hey, Ridgecrest has a reputation for having meetings, talking, talking, and then doing nothing. And I think this is something that we don't really have to do that on. Let's just figure out where the $17,000 is and do it. I'm sorry. Second comment is, I've stood here a number of times and mentioned that it would be nice to have town hall meetings periodically. I think to some extent, and I seriously don't mean to be critical, but some of you folks are out of step with what the public is interested in. And I think it's time that we get together in a more informal setting, sit down with the public, and find out what the public's interested in, find out what the public's priorities are, and get back in sync with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Evening, Council. My name is Edward Chikas, 716 Ginger. So after reading some of the various newspaper articles this week, I was a little concerned. I was thinking that the whole town was going to end up becoming polarized again, and thinking, here comes the big roller coaster, here we go again on the whole casino debate. But some of the things I was thinking about from this last time around was, a lot of people ended up coming up and basically saying that they were representing their entire congregation or a lot of different people. And there are a lot of people were kind of taking some of the moral grounds for how they supported or how they didn't support. And just to be perfectly clear, I'm Mormon, LDS, but I go to places like Vegas. I do not gamble, I do not drink, I do not smoke. But I'm, for one, am in full support of having the casino here in Ridgecrest. It sounds like a bit of a contradiction, but I'm also, my thought process is, I know that it's going to end up bringing various types of businesses here in town, it's going to bring income into this town. It's going to bring a lot of various good things, benefits. Am I necessarily going to participate in the gambling that's going to be associated to it? No. But I also know that there's going to be other things that I would participate in with that. But some of the things that I do want to kind of caution the council with is, some of the various, you know, opinions with that, is I'd like to, you know, agree with Ms. Ash when she's basically saying that you cannot legislate morality, which is what some of the various things that people are also trying to say. When various people come up and try and say that they represent various groups of people, saying that they have these opinions, church organizations, they're trying to push an agenda. They're no longer a church organization. That's a lobbyist group, okay? Just to be very clear on that. When moral grounds are taken on issues, for example, like the gambling and casino, the same stance is to create a policy is not applied to ban other forms of gambling, bingo, lottery tickets, online gambling, then the moral objection is irrelevant. Again, a lobbyist will pick and choose how they will try to influence policy. The same organization that takes a moral stance on a casino are not picketing businesses that sell cigarettes, alcohol, or trying to change the policy here for the public on these other issues, just like how a lobbyist would pick and choose how to influence, to suit their own agenda. Again, think about this. We're going to be going on this roller coaster again. Think about what is in the best interest of the town. You have to separate that, the morality side. You cannot legislate that. Some of the interesting part of this, about what some people are going to be, end up saying, is they're trying to be trying to take the moral high ground on this, but yet they're going to still be shopping at these various places that still sells alcohol, tobacco. And what about these other places that still has all the various gambling, various things? For example, those darn gambling machines that are at the front of Walmart. Yes, I said it, at Walmart. My wife is addicted to the claw machine games at the front. But guess what? Those, by definition, are gambling, because you put money into the machine with the illusion that you have a little bit of control for the, you might win something, but most of the time, you don't. But what is it? It is gambling. But nobody's picketing and trying to say, let's ban the gambling machines in front of Walmart. What is that? Okay? The point I'm trying to make here is, we have to separate and make sure that we're not trying to legislate morality. That's all I'm trying to say. Okay? Again, I'm in full support of it. Reason why is because I realize and understand that it's going to end up bringing some good into the town. You definitely have to balance it, separate that morality with that, and then weigh it, and then make the right decision. But I also want to stress, we do have a full MSA in place. The agreement was in place. And then look at it from the other perspective. What is the risks of rejecting it further? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dave Matthews, my address is on file. Probably most people are aware by now that tomorrow is the 75th anniversary of D-Day. I suspect that there's not too many people in here besides me that actually remember it. I wasn't there, I was too young. But what I was doing that day, that morning, was trying to deliver morning papers. At that time, our city had two different papers, one in the morning and one in the evening. Gee whiz. What a concept. I delivered the morning, my buddy across the street delivered the evenings. When I picked up my package to put in my paper bag, it was too dark to really see what it said. But halfway around the route, I looked at a couple of them as I was folding them, and at that point, I finished the rest of my route in record time. That was a great day. What people tend to overlook also is, a few days ago, was the 77th anniversary of the Battle of Midway in the Pacific. That was a very decisive battle. Go read your history. Shortly after that, was the Battle of Guadalcanal, which is where I think my cousin's husband departed from us. We never did get real word as to whatever happened to him. Back in those days, there was, the only gambling that was going on was run by the mafia. Now, since then, the mafia has worked its way into the government and into the Indian tribes, and that's where we are today. Now, people talk about morals. There's only one set of morals, God's morals. The other set is the devil's morals. So you make up your mind which you're going to observe. Back in those days, there was, the only gambling that was going on was run by the mafia. Now, since then, the mafia has worked its way into the government and into the Indian tribes, and that's where we are today. Now, people talk about morals. There's only one set of morals, God's morals. The other set is the devil's morals. So you make up your mind which you're gonna observe. Now, that's all I'm gonna say about that right at the moment, because I have another issue. I have been without phone service for over a month. A month. Luckily, the internet still works, so I can manage to communicate with most people and stream some of my news and whatnot. But Mayor Breeden, you and I, when Frontier took over from Verizon shortly afterwards, we sat up in the upstairs conference room with officials from Frontier, and they promised they were gonna do us good. Well, in my opinion, they have made it worse. And I would like this council to, I know you got a lot on your plate, but I would like you, this council, in behalf of the citizens or the customers of Frontier Communications, to file a complaint with the Public Utilities Commission, because they are not doing their job. I have technicians scheduled to come out Friday morning. Hopefully, they're gonna resolve this issue, but in the meantime, they tell me to call... Well, how can I call? They don't have a phone. Oh, okay, I go to use another phone. All right. What I've got is a track phone. Every time I open it or go online with her or make a call, I get ding minutes, okay? That served me well when I had a real phone. Okay? Then, in order to get to the service technician, they put me on hold for 40 or 45 minutes. Oh, they'll call me back, but then I got other things to do. The only way I was able to get any kind of communication at all, luckily, was because I still had the internet and I could do an online chat. That is unacceptable service. And there's other outfits, too, that are providing unacceptable service to the customers in Ridgecrest. Now, well, I guess my time's up, so I guess I won't say that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.[755.51][755.51](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Stacy Jackson. Quite frankly, that was a reprehensible comment that was just made about the mafia infiltrating the Timbasha Shoshone tribe. If I was in a court of law, I would ask for that to be stricken from the record, but we are at a public hearing. I guess he's entitled to his comment, but that was really awful. As the way I see things, the city of Ridgecrest is in a budget shortfall. From the last budget report I saw and the reporting from the paper, we don't have a lot of fluff to play with. I think a lot of city departments have been cut, employees have been cut, staff has been cut, employees are overworked, they're working overtime. There's not a lot of money or people to do what we need to do. The public spoke on the Parks and Rec tax. I personally supported it, but I completely understand why people did not support the Park and Recs tax. I think the city of Ridgecrest is looking for more money from the citizens via the Park and Recs tax. I also think that the city of Ridgecrest is looking for more money from the ball field. $17,000, they're gonna charge people more money to use those ball fields. Why? Because we don't have the money to pay for the basic services that we need. They're also talking about increasing the business license fee to $85. There's lots of small business owners in this town who can't afford that fee. So to me, the Timbasha Shoshone tribe is paying $500,000 a year per the MSA, which would cover a lot of this budget shortfall. We wouldn't be having these conversations. So instead of the city of Ridgecrest trying to tax the citizens, increase the fees on the ball field users, increase the fees on the business owners, I don't know how you can look this gift horse in the mouth. And quite frankly, we can't, because we cannot afford a lawsuit if we do not. Thank you.
Thank you.[863.01][863.01](APPLAUSE).
George Golson, Timbasha Shoshone tribe. For people who don't know, I'm no longer the chairman of the tribe. I have been re-elected to tribal council, and tribal council saw it fit that I continued on this project, so I wanna thank them for that and for their resolve on this issue. And for the residents who are not aware, we received a letter from the Department of Interior, and I'm not sure if there's just a, they're that slow, or just what happens over there? But we deal with this all the time. It was dated September 27, 2018. I could've walked to Washington DC and got this piece of paper. It's just crazy. So I'm not exactly sure why we have our suspicions, why it took so long, but this is, and without being in the tribal world, you don't understand how tremendous this is for our tribe to accomplish this. There are two other things that happened to the tribe. One was recognition in 1982, and the other one was the Homeland Act that was signed by President Clinton. And this is number three, and this is tremendous for our people, and I can't convey that in words strong enough to really bring it out so you understand what this means to us as a people. This means education, this means it's so much to us that it's borderline sacred for an accomplishment of this level. And it's, I'm really kind of speechless, because it was a tremendous surprise to us, especially after all the things that have gone on. We waited like everybody else, but we are enthusiastic, and our resolve is very strong, and we really want to work in good faith with the city. Every time I come to a city council meeting, I hear about the shortfalls, about that. We bring more good with the casino than bad, and it reminds me of Star Trek, where Spock's talking about the needs of the many outweigh the bad things of the few. And that's a fact. You go to any city that's got an Indian casino, yeah, there's some bad things. There's some bad things happening here now, and you don't have a casino. But we bring good as well, and I think that's overlooked, that you don't look at the good things that are possible. It's always about the bad things that are possible, and what we bring outweighs the bad things by far. It says here, "As discussed in detail below, the Department of Interior has determined that Congress mandated the trust acquisition of the Ridgecrest site pursuant to Section 5D of the Homeland Act. Pursuant to Section 7 of the Homeland Act, the Ridgecrest site shall be considered the tribe's initial reservation and eligible for gaming pursuant to Section 20 of the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act."[1051.08][1051.08](APPLAUSE). This was signed by Tara Sweeney, who is the, not acting, but she's the Assistant Secretary. I had the pleasure of meeting her months ago. It's unfortunate that the BIA couldn't just look me in the face and go, hey, you know what? We're gonna hold on to this. I have no idea why it sits on somebody's desk, but this is pretty typical for Indian country. But the conclusion of, and it goes to, it breaks it down into the history, but the conclusion is, "As mandated by the Timbasha Shoshone Homeland Act, the department will acquire approximately 26.48 acres of the Ridgecrest site for the tribe. Consistent with the applicable law, the regional director shall immediately record the land into trust. Also, as mandated by the Homeland Act, the Ridgecrest site, upon its acquisition in trust, shall be considered to be initial reservation for the purposes of gaming under Section 20 of IGRA." For us, people were talking about, oh, why are you in such a hurry? The Homeland Act was in 2000, so 19 years later, that's not a hurry. We've been working on this for almost 20 years. There are tribes that have applications in there that have been in there for 30 years. So we're very enthusiastic about moving forward with this, and we're enthusiastic about bringing good to your community. I live in Perump. I joined the Perump Arts Council to contribute to my community. I volunteer my time, because like here, we want things for kids to do there, and a casino here would tremendously help out your problems that you currently face. And like I said, the good far outweighs the bad tremendously when it comes to revenue, when it comes to events. Other tribes do lots of events that are open to the public and for the public and for the betterment of the public. So I'm hoping that the city will work in good faith with us to work out any problems that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1186.92][1186.92](APPLAUSE).
We have an hour allocated for public comment. Are you the last? Is there anybody else expecting to speak? Because right now, we are over the hour. Did we? All right, then, go ahead.
Can I talk? Okay, my name is Raymond Kilso, and I think I'm one of the few people here in this room that actually read the tribal environmental impact report. It's a four-and-a-half-inch document that I read over a year ago. I got it from the Timbasha tribe, because I've looked at environmental reports for many decades, and one of the things that stuck out to me, and I'm 18% Native American myself, okay? I don't have a problem with this, I don't have a problem with gambling, but I do have, what caught my eye was the economic chapter. And guess how big the economic chapter was in this document? One page. Four-and-a-half inches of stuff, and it boils down to one page. And what did it say in there? It said basically that they base their economic figures on the first year, 320,000 people going through that front door. 320,000 people. No mention of how much each individual had to lose from gambling or spending money or so on. 320,000 people. Now, and the third year, when after they built the 100-room hotel, that number goes up to 370,000 people going through the front door. Please take the economic, those economic numbers that were given to you and me by the tribe and start looking at that. How much, how much money does each individual have to spend to come up with these numbers that have to do with, how much is Ridgecrest getting? Half a million dollars? How much, who's getting what? Who's getting this? And that's not clear at all, but it's in black and white. It's about a quarter inch from the rear of the document, and it's there for you to take a look at, all right? Let's keep it in perspective. This is not about, this is not about religious things and races and all that. It's about economics for our city, the economics. Are you gonna make any money? Is this gonna benefit Ridgecrest in the short term, in the long term? Let's look at the consequences here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. Mike Neal. Just like to address one or two things briefly that have been brought up here tonight. I think I'll start first off with the numerous statements made by one gentleman, with all due respect to him, about you can't legislate morality. I hope you remember, Mayor Breeden, the conversation we had over two years ago about the basis for law, and the very basis for any law is moral values, period, straight and simple. If you had no moral values, you wouldn't have anything to even come up with laws that you could pass to legislate. So there's, don't let people throw you into some kind of mental disconnect on this kind of issue, okay? If you have moral values, then you have somewhere to start in figuring out laws to govern people. It's as simple as that. The next one is about money, and this has been up, always comes up, I guess, in one fashion or the other, and I think you all learned very well that the people in Ridgecrest really don't wanna be taxed anymore. So just to let you know, I've got a plan that I think would be a win-win both for the people and for the city. There's a way that you can pay for some of these things that they're actually saying what we don't have the money for. Well, you actually do have the money. However, I've offered so many things up here at this podium so many times over the years with no response, that if you wanna know what this plan is, you can call me. I'm not gonna lay it out before you tonight, because quite frankly, many, many times, I felt like it just wasn't being listened to. So if you wanna know about a win-win plan, then you know how to get in touch with me. And as far as the old statements that have been made dozens and dozens and dozens of times about the casino, well, we've heard all about how great the casino is for Ridgecrest tonight and so forth and so on. We gotta work with the city. I don't know what you're gonna work with, because it's currently no agreement to sell the land to the casino developer, so I guess I'll have to find someplace else to go. However, if you wanna know about all the great benefits of a casino in a small, especially in a small town, then just go to nouridcrescascino.com and look at the large amount of documentation. Thank you for your deriding laughs. That's very respectful. I appreciate that.
Mike, wait, wait. Wait, Mike, you're talking to us, please.
Well, thank you for letting him pop off with that, Madam Mayor.
I just said, you're talking to us, sir.
I know you, I know you are. Wish you'd do something about that kind of stuff. I don't laugh at that loud. So that's what we get. That's what you get. That's what you get more so with casino supporters if you tie hands with them and go down the road. But just read the documentation. Don't listen to the claims.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. You've seen some pretty interesting press. My congratulations, of course, to the tribe, and I'm here to tell you that over the course of the last four years on this very difficult and painful road, I have been consistent, and the tribe has been consistent in everything that we've said. We've said we support the site. We made a commitment to that site. We made a commitment to build X and to build Y, and to spend a certain amount of money, $73 million, some serious money. We committed to hire locally. This innovation report here is a feasibility study, and you probably, a lot of you are probably tired of hearing me say this, but this is a world-renowned independent company that specializes in putting out economic impact studies on the good of what casinos do and what they bring to a city and to the surrounding community. So to summarize that, is total project costs $73 million, and from the innovation study, which is, by the way, very, very similar numbers to the numbers I first presented to city council and to the citizens of Ridgecrest probably three and a half years ago, is a total new direct jobs of 361, and total jobs in Kern County, which is direct and indirect jobs, is 522 jobs. And that's some pretty serious economics there. I'm not sure who the new people are coming into this town, you know, gonna generate that kind of employment. And again, I have to say this, we've made a commitment to hire locally wherever possible. And of course, there's a positive impact on local businesses in this study. No evidence of measurable impact on local crime rates. That was verified as well by the then chief of police. And just to remind everybody, there's a 20-year municipal services agreement for payments to the city, and these are payments to the city in lieu of property taxes, because that property, which by the way, has been sitting vacant for probably 1,000 years and has been on the market for 17 years, and we're the ones who are gonna buy that property on behalf of the tribe. But at the end of the day, it's about $3.5 million, including, plus, sorry, not including, plus transient, hotel transient property taxes, the TOT taxes, over $369,000 per year. And every time I come here, there's budgetary problems, there's a shortfall here, there's the parks and recreation problem, you know, the list goes on. There's the penny pool, there's a lot of stuff there. So I think this casino will be good for the economy, and I think it will bridge some of your gaps, and maybe the parks and recreation don't have to charge for use of the facilities. So again, in summary, we have done everything we said we would do, everything I've said and everything that's been up on that board for, on and off, for three or four years, we are still sticking to, to this day, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1772.33][1772.33](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name's Jeff Scott. I live on Inyo Street. So I'd hoped this whole issue had gone away, but apparently the casino is back, and it strikes me that we spent so many years arguing about this. The council wasted three opportunities to, I think, make serious progress and actually get this right. And you've got two more coming up next year. A primary election and a general election. So if we're going to reopen this festering wound and have people arguing with one another all over town, I'm of the opinion that the only way we're ever going to reach a point where people are on the same page about how we're gonna move forward is to let them vote. Either one side or the other is going to get a significant majority, I presume. If it's near fifty-fifty, you know, we may be right back where we started. But I'm thinking that, given enough time for both sides to present their cases several months before an election, the people will have a chance to educate themselves, understand what they're voting for, and one side will, or the other will get at least sixty percent. And once I think both sides see that, the arguing will stop and people will agree to move forward. So if you're gonna do this, let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Leahy. The nature of contracts, hey, pipe down. The nature of contracts are that they are legal documents.
Wait a minute. Please. We, we talked about this before. Let them speak. Let, and we're not gonna talk to them, and if I didn't correct whoever did it before, my apology, but we are, this is the person speaking. We are all listening. Thank you.
Contracts are legal documents. If a city enters into a finance agreement to buy a new Ford truck and makes payments on it for two years, and then a new council comes in and decides that they don't like the Ford truck and they're not going to make the payments on the truck, that's not legal. And perhaps our city attorney, Mr. Pilchin, can explain some of this to you in more detail. We have a signed MSA with the Timbasa tribe. That is a legal document that stipulates that we support a casino here. Now, I know that we've had a lot of Bakersfield money and a lot of influence coming in here anti-casino, but what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that we still have a legal document that, that stipulates that we support the casino on that property. That doesn't go away. That expires in twenty years. Now, the, if we decide that we're just going to, oh, we're not going to do anything about it or whatever, the issue is probably gonna get turned over to courts. And a judge will order something, but what will the cost be to the city? And that's my main reason that I'm up here right now, is I want to urge the city not to set foot in the waters that's going to lead us into some sort of litigious battle with the Timbasa tribe. They should be our friends. The Timbasa people are from here. This is their home. They belong here. They have now been granted the land to be taken into trust, and I do hope that we won't have recalcitrant council members who are anti-gambling getting us into a court battle that's gonna cost the city lots of money and that we will lose. The city will lose that battle. It's happened already up in Mammoth, and they ended up with a twenty-nine million dollar bill. We don't want that here, so I urge you guys to comply with the MSA. Bring this back, bring this back, put it on the schedule, and let's get the land sold at twice what its market value is, by the way. At least twice its market value. Sell it, and then let's proceed with this. And I don't wanna hear anymore about pro-gambling or anti-gambling. That basically, I've heard for the last time about the guy's dad who was giving all of his money to the prostitutes. You know, it's like, that's enough of that stuff. We got a contract. Let's follow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It is five sixteen. We still have one more minute. If we started it, I'm sorry, it's seven sixteen. I'm assuming that no one else can put their five minutes into one, so no other public comment. Okay. Thank you. We will close public comment, and we will come to council announcements. Who wants, Lindsey, you wanna start? You have none? Scott, Mike? Okay, I have one. I would like to remind or let you know, Kern Cog is going to have a, a electric vehicle partnership, and it's going to be held on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, eleven AM to one thirty PM at the Springbowl Suites of the Marriott. Registration is required because there's only twenty spaces. And they are asking, lunch will be provided, and they are asking who would like to attend? Business owners, fleet managers, local agencies, developers, solar companies, multi-unit dwelling owners or managers, school districts, facilities managers, and interested members of the public. They are having potential grants and dollars that may be loaned at a low interest rate, and it is going to be there on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, from eleven AM to one thirty. Please look at this because this is a huge benefit. If we can get some of these grants to us and to any of the other entities in the valley that are interested.
Madam Mayor, the same group is working on putting the first electric charging station here at City Hall. It's the same group that's working on that.
Yes. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So we, after we've, council announcements, the consent calendar. First items, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority, Housing Authority, Regular Meeting dated May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Is there any items that we would like to have? Approved? Not? Okay. Motion?
I move approval.
Second?
Okay.
Please vote.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Discussion and action items. Mayor Breeden, with the concurrence of the council, will appoint a replacement member to the planning commission. Ricka?
At the last city council meeting, we had one more council member, Mr. Hayman, that still needed to appoint a planning commissioner. We did an advertisement. We didn't get anybody, and so I didn't know if you had been able to come up with anybody at this point.
So I currently have a couple prospective people that are showing interest in it, so I'm gonna confirm up with them and should have something to report back, you know, within the next meeting or two.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask a question? Because I know there was a, will we have a quorum because of the vacation time during that time? Do we have a quorum? We do. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Can we, because of committee meeting coverage, though?
We're working that.
Okay.
The swearing-in? We're working that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item. Resolution to approve the fiscal year nineteen twenty rate adjustment request for solid waste services. I know you're not Ron Stran, so Heather, thank you.
Good evening, council. Waste Management has submitted a request for an annual contractual adjustment of the services rates pursuant to section eleven point two and exhibit B of the solid waste franchise agreement between the city and Waste Management and an extraordinary adjustment in service rates due to a change in law as provided for section eleven point three of the agreement. Waste Management requests the city approve an annual adjustment in residential, commercial, and industrial service rates of five point nine percent. The contributing factors to the rate adjustment were increases in labor and fuel cost and inflation. Staff verified the rate adjustment was calculated in accordance with exhibit B of the franchise agreement. They're also asking for a special circumstances rate adjustment. The request is in response to changes to new recycling laws and trade policies that have significantly impacted the recycling industry, driving down commodity values and greatly increasing processing costs. The special circumstances adjustment is three point one percent for residential, one point six for commercial, and one percent for industrial roll-off services. Waste Management says that by incrementally absorbing these cost changes as they are incurred, the city is protecting the long-term viability of its recycling program. According to Waste Management, without any consideration, Ridgecrest programs will likely face either rollbacks in services or a compounded adjustment or both in the future years. From the start of the agreement through this year, the average rate adjustment for residential services has been less than one point five percent per year. So, I don't have any slides, sorry. The, if approved, these adjustments would take the residential cart, which is now sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. If approved, it would take it to eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. The commercial would go from one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents to two hundred dollars and ninety cents. And multifamily would go from one twenty-five to forty, one twenty-five forty-three to one thirty-four ninety-six. Staff recommends that city council approve both the request for annual and the special circumstances rate adjustment. The annual adjustment was calculated in accordance with agreements, and the special circumstances rate adjustment is reasonable under the circumstances to maintain the city's state-mandated recycling program. I'll also tell you guys that Josh Mann is here from Waste Management. Should you have any specific questions that he might be able to address?
Josh, did you wanna come up, please? I know we have, we may have some questions, so we might as well have you up here. Okay. Is there questions from council? Scott, did you?
Well, on the, I do have just a quick question. On the, the rate adjustments that you just went over, is that based off of that same percentage rate increase that you ran, ran over with us, the three point one, one point six?
Yeah.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, the rate adjustments, as she reported out in the staff report, are concurrent with what's before you within the staff report.
And then each year, are we looking at raising it to stay with cost, future cost? Is that, so, those same increments each year?
No. So the, the rate adjustment formula, as provided for within the franchise agreement, was developed by the city's consultant, HFNH. It is based on a series of indexes, so it's a multi-index formula. Those are weighted out, and so it will be a different percentage adjustment each year through the remainder of the term of the contract based on the changes within those indexes.
And so how long, how long of the contract are we looking at?
So the current contract runs now through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. So I, I can tell you that there will be some significant additional regulatory issues that will need to be addressed with any future extension and/or new contract, just to be in accordance with, with state law. I know that's a major issue considering the, the terms in which this particular agreement was entered into, trying to ensure the, the city's compliance with those laws.
And so could we get a, is there any way to get a, you know, the, the cost increases for those, I mean, it's only going out to two thousand and twenty-one, so I mean, it would be like for two thousand and twenty-one and, or as far out as you could go, just so we, you know, know what rate payers and, and businesses are gonna be looking at over?
I, I wish I could, sir. That would certainly make both our jobs a lot easier. It is a year-over-year change, so those indexes are produced by, in some cases, it's, it's the, the Consumer Price Index is put out by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The Fuel Index is put out by National Fuel Tracking Index. And then the Employment Cost Index is put out by a nationally-recognized index for employment cost. I, I wish those were, were published with, with a little more certainty in advance, but unfortunately, we have to wait for those cost changes to occur to account for them.
Okay. So I guess what I'm looking for is like, you know, in, as far as future, like four years out or six years out, are these rates gonna go up, you know, like these increments each and what people can expect? But I understand where, you know.
Correct.
Where your limitations are.
And in this case, we're looking in hindsight, so this is the year, year-over-year change of the previous year compared to the year previous to that. So from a standpoint of, we're, we're actually recouping our costs from, that we incurred the previous year moving forward, so.
Thanks.
Refresh my memory, what was our rate increase last year? It wasn't hardly anything, was it?
Off the top of my head, that is a very good question. I do have some information here. Let me.
I can say, we didn't say the dollar amounts that it was increasing this year, did we? Over the, I mean, it's included in the agenda, but then, so residential.
She mentioned it.
Okay. She did. Okay.
But she said the residential, the commercial, and the industrial.
It's like two dollars, two dollars and eighteen.
I think it was similar to what it was last year.
I thought it wasn't very much.
I thought it was like one point nine is what I recall, but I may be off on that.
Doing some quick math here for you. I have the, I have the rate from last year. I did not bring with me the percentage adjustment.
Do you know, do you have an approximate idea of when it was on the agenda? Because I can pull it up really fast.
The adjustment from last year was four point eight two percent.
Correct.
I just pulled up last year's staff report. That was the increase. Four point eight two.
So, and with this one, five point five?
And, and keep in mind that with, in the provisions of the, of the amendment that was put together last year, there are now rate protections in terms of, the rate cannot exceed six percent of the standard rate adjustment in any one year. So any, anything in excess of that would, would be rolled over into a successive year. So we could not, within the, the rate adjustment formula, go above six percent in any one year.
I recall last year when we were discussing this, and I remember the one point nine percent increase, and I thought that was the overall cost increase. Was it from a spec, it doesn't matter. I'm thinking it was from a specific part of the overall adjustment. But my, and if you know what's coming ahead and you can't know for sure what new changes are coming down the pike, what kind of expectations do you have in the future? Because we know it's not gonna get any cheaper.
That is, that is probably a very wise assertion there, Mayor. From a standpoint of what was brought into place last year, in addition to the standard rate adjustment, we also had the addition of commercial organics recycling that was introduced for businesses to comply with AB eighteen twenty-six. The future elements that I can tell you that we're gonna be dealing with is with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. That is going to require the city to adopt significant new programs, basically extending organic waste collection to all generators, so that would be your, your residential users. It's also gonna require some additional state reporting, mainly in the, conducting quarterly reviews of all generators, making sure that they are in compliance, that they are participating in a recycling program, they're participating in an organics program, and that they are not abusing those programs, so limitations on contamination. There's also some additional education and enforcement requirements. And keep in mind, this is a draft regulation. We expect final regs to be approved by CalRecycle later this year, although this is, the current revision is, is, I think, about as revised as we're gonna get. The, the city will have to get in, more involved in the enforcement of the, the state laws with regards to recycling. And then finally, in terms of diverting more organic material from landfills, the city would also need to engage in a food recovery program, so either partnering with a food bank or establishing a food bank, and then promoting that as an alternative to a organic waste collection or home composting. waste collection or home composting situation.
Okay, thank you.
Let's talk recycling for a minute.
Yes, sir.
I've read a couple articles about how it's really gone down, especially with the fight with China, things like that. Now, the last three loads of card, I recycle cardboard. The last three loads of cardboard I took down, the first one I got $100 a ton, the second one I got $90 a ton, the last one I got $40 a ton.
Correct.
So, the value of recycling is deteriorating, and I understand that's on plastic and everything else. Is that concurrent with what I'm reading?
Correct. So, commodity values, that is the material value of the plastic or the metal or the paper, the commodity itself. We are looking at currently record world lows for the value of those materials. That is definitely affecting programs, recycling programs across the country, because in many cases, they're offered at little or no cost to participate in, with the thought that commodity value would offset a portion or potentially all of the costs associated with offering those programs. We, based on what we're seeing within the world markets, we are not anticipating a major trend in pricing going back up, mainly in the fact that more and more off-takers of materials are actually limiting the amount of material they take, if any. You cited China, the current China policies, and their indications are that they will be basically prohibiting all importation of recycled materials by next year. We are seeing similar indications from India, Malaysia, and the Philippines, basically closing off most of Asia to accepting recycled materials, which is a huge swing from where we were two years ago, where they made up the lion's share of where recycled materials went in the world. On the flip side, Waste Management has taken a proactive role in keeping more material here domestically. We've gone from about 62% of the materials we recycled being kept here in the United States to, this year, we anticipate that to exceed 77%. So, the thought is, is that that should bring some stability to the industry, certainly stability to the programs that we offer for our customer cities, and then the rates that folks pay.
Well, I know about six months ago, along with my cardboard, I took about eight cases of computer paper down for recycling, and my recycling company refused to take it. He said China wasn't buying it anymore, they didn't want it.
Correct. Correct. Mixed paper, on average, I do have some numbers, it's currently trading at about a negative $2 per ton, so actually, what it's actually costing is $2 per ton to get somebody to take it.
Well, you ended up with those cases of mine.
Well, and that is kind of the best of times and the worst of times, in the fact that Ridgecrest has never had more robust recycling programs. The recent CalRecycle visit was one that was very, very positive about the strides that the city of Ridgecrest has made since 2011. As you know, there was a compliance order the city was under. We've since exceeded the requirements of those compliance order prescriptive remedies, and are well on our way, from a voluntary standpoint, of making sure we get maximum compliance, so, which is an amazing feat, considering that the programs for City of Ridgecrest are completely voluntary, and we're getting nearly 100% compliance.
Okay, is there any other council questions or comments? Any from the public?
My name is Stan Rattura. I just have a question. I was curious whether or not our consultant looked at and reviewed this particular increase. I have no reason to believe it's not totally correct, I just, we spent a lot of money on HFNH originally, getting involved. They don't use a lot of money, but they offer a lot of insight. And so, I was hoping that they've been kept on in the review of this thing, and I'm just curious, did that happen?
I believe that staff has reviewed this. I believe the city manager reviewed it. I do not know that HFNH has reviewed this, but we use the same means that we've used in the past that they have, which are the indexes that Josh had mentioned.
HFNH actually deals with multiple cities, multiple areas, and quite frankly, I think they add something. I would recommend that you actually look, next time this comes up, to look at them again. My understanding is that the money that we get from Waste Management as a franchise agreement or whatever it is, is limited to certain uses, and the HFNH contract is one of those uses that can be paid for by those funds. So, I would encourage you to take advantage of all of the expertise that's available from that vendor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm still Dave Matthews. I, first of all, I want to say that I have no objection to the rate increase. My trash bill is still the lowest one I have, so, and I'm happy with the service, except, and I have to point this out, wasting, and this has nothing to do with the local people here. It has to do with the corporate, because Waste Management, like Frontier, is a national conglomerate. But here again, their website is not friendly. They should have a local phone number that will go to wherever it needs to go. Now, we've got a representative here in Ridgecrest who does a pretty good job, but he's got other things to do. This should be a dedicated number on the website for the local people. Now, having said that, I didn't understand quite what the proposal is for the food waste that's being proposed. Is that going into some kind of a compost thing, or what? We don't know.
As current with our commercial organics recycling program, we have a partnership with the county. So, the material that's collected here from Ridgecrest businesses, mainly restaurants, is tipped at the Ridgecrest landfill. It's then transloaded, that's just placed into a semi-truck, and it's taken to the Mountain Burn and Composting Facility in Bakersfield, where it's composted along with the, most, most, the majority of Kern County's organic materials.
Well, thank you for that. I hope that works. I say I hope, because I'm not sure how much has been tried yet. But let me give you another little point of history here. Back when I was delivering those papers that I mentioned earlier, we had one place where the trash went. Garbage, trash, anything that went into the garbage can, the guys came around and picked up. With the old backloaders, and they actually came into your yard and picked up the cans and took them out and dumped them and brought them back. In fact, Cates was still doing that 50 years ago, or whatever it was when I first got here. And there's been a lot of improvements in that respect. However, what we did, what they did with those trucks, is they took them down to a, I don't know if it was a city or a utility powerhouse. They backed them up over a big opening in the floor, dumped them, dumped everything into the facility, and then when the trucks got out of the way, they conveyed them into a furnace, and they burnt everything. The only thing that came out was electricity, steam, and ash. So, maybe if some of the environmental people would get their heads together, and we've got to improve the technology, I'm throwing this out for people to contemplate, because we've got enough technology, I think we could do that again, especially with the respect now that some of these other countries don't want to take our trash. So, we've got to do something with it, and we can burn, we can make electricity, electricity, excuse me.
Yes, Council Mike Neil Kinney. When we talk about the rate increase, let me just get accuracy to the full picture. You've got two increases for a total of 9%. You've got the, what they're calling the annual adjustment, and then the special circumstances adjustment. Couple of things to note there, if you look at the, what's on the agenda right above the schedule of services, a really surprising gate rate they're quoting from last year would be, or this year, I guess, 2018, last year of 2018, $14, and 2019 went to $50. I'd assume that must be the county's gate fee for the waste trucks to go in there and dump. That's over three times. That's really shocking to hear that the county all of a sudden decides they need more than three times the fee from people to go in there and dump. I suppose in the overall cost structure, that only folds into the 3.1% of the rate increase. Is that correct? Is this large gate rate increase, is that folds, is that, I guess I'm curious, what exactly the 3.1% special rate increase, other than out this gate rate fee?
Correct. So, that is folded into the special circumstances increase, which obviously is totaled up in the total increase, and is reflected in the final proposed fiscal year 1920 rate.
Okay. And then, you know, as you all well know, the good old inflation rate index and so forth, even though many claims is that inflation is only a few percent, you know, we're getting almost the max of 6% the annual rate increase. And people say, well, it's not a lot. Well, you know, if all of your costs went up 10%, I think you'd be maybe crying a few crocodile tears at home over your budget book, your checkbook, because that's significant. So, I'm hoping we can, you know, not do the almost full 6% and then more special circumstance rate increases in the future, that it's going to get, you know, to the point to where people, and we still have the option here, around here, they're just going to say, well, I don't need the service, I'll haul it myself. So, you know, that's what a lot of them did for years, when Ben threatened to raise the rates a whole bunch, so a lot more people decided to do that. And unfortunately, of course, we hear from the gentleman and things that not necessarily related to the rate increase per se, but of course, the good old state of California is going to enforce more compliance in some fashion. Who knows what that's going to be? So, the police state of the recycling bureaucracy is going to, sounds like it's going to exercise its heavy hand upon the citizens a little more. And even though the recycling is totally voluntary, basically, for citizens, you don't have to use your recycling can necessarily, all the costs of doing the recycling, we see coming into increased cost to us. So, the recycling is costing us, and that's what it is. So, just a thought strikes me, you always talk about getting new industry in town and so forth, maybe some of you ought to look at, research, find out if there are any companies that make products from recycled materials that, you know, could use the amount of recycled material flow rate that we have coming out of Ridgecrest to establish a business right here, and then you don't have to haul it anywhere. Mr. Mauer, your paper could stay right here in Ridgecrest and be turned into something that somebody else could, a company could make a business of doing something with it, turn it into a product, and reselling it. Now, you've got a business, and all your trash stays right in the area, and all the, you know, there's a lot of cost hauling it to LA, right? So, if you don't get much for it, it's not worth it. But, you know, that's why negative, you know, $2 per ton, yeah, that's where it comes from. So, anyway, that's it.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Is there any other council comment? Okay, motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Five ayes, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution for Amendment Number One to Agreement Number 496-2018 with the County of Kern for the Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Block Grant-funded Senior Center Renovation Project Number CD17131, and authorize the city manager Ron Strand to execute Agreement Number One. Sir.
Honorable Mayor, council members, this is just a little bookkeeping item I have for you tonight. Back in April, April 15th, we got a letter from the county, from Natural Resources, that they discovered an error between the parent agreement and the attachment, which is known as Attachment A, and that is a schedule of the dollars that are going to be used on the project. Anyway, what they have requested is that we take or amend the parent agreement such that the error can be corrected. What happened is, in Paragraph 2A of the parent agreement, the county made a mistake and they had the entire funding amount identified rather than the amount that the county was actually going to fund. So, what we're asking you to do is to adopt a resolution for this amendment to the parent agreement, and revise the dollar amounts that are called for. The correct amount that should be in Section 2 or Paragraph 2A of the parent agreement should be $206,063, and that will match then the attached Schedule A that's attached to the parent agreement. We're also asking you then to authorize the city manager Ron Strand to execute the amendment number one.
And there is no fiscal impact?
None whatsoever. This is just a typographical error that the county discovered, and they need to make sure that the parent agreement matches the amount that was shown in Schedule A.
Any council questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Okay, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Please vote. Thank you, Mr. Colb. Mayor? I did it. Five ayes, motion carries. Sorry. All right, the next one is Item Number Five. I'm sorry, Item Number Six. Proposed action approves a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council establishing city's policy for accepting or denying peace officers' workers' compensation claims for injuries occurred while engaging in law enforcement or life-saving activities outside the State of California Labor Code 36002B4. Jed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The Assembly Bill 1749 was passed last year in 2018, and what this allows is cities to enact a resolution to allow for workman's comp claims during specific times when an officer who is off-duty in another state, and has to react to a life-saving or specific event that he or she be covered through the workman's comp. Now, this stemmed from the shooting in Las Vegas, where several officers were present. In fact, one of our own Kern County officers, he was a Bakersfield officer, was shot and injured, and many, many months of injured and many, many months of rehab. And the bill also wrote in that it would cover those officers injured in Las Vegas, in the Las Vegas shooting. So what is before you is to adopt a resolution that would cover the officers should they have to enact or engage in saving lives and specific incidents outside of the state. Now, as far as the fiscal impact, there probably will be some, but we probably won't know that, if I'm correct, Rick, until we can submit the resolution, which is our insurance company requires before they will cover or not cover.
That is correct.
So with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, is there questions from council?
Go ahead, Mike. I found it a little confusing because it says it doesn't apply to off-duty, non-acting and outside the state of California. This is however, there's an exclusion if they're doing something under those circumstances.
Right. Yeah, we got that cleared up because I was kind of confused by that, too. Basically-
It's like a double negative. So there's, first there's the exclusion, what the policy doesn't cover, then there's an exclusion from the exclusion, meaning they do cover that.
Right. So in other words, if they were moonlighting in another state doing something, security work or something like that, they would not be covered with us. They would, they have to be off-duty, similar to the Vegas incident, something like that where they're attending, something happens while they're there, and they react and engage.
So if they were on vacation and they were being a guard at a liquor store, this, not include them, but if they were in the liquor store buying something and an armed robber came in and they responded to that armed robber, then they would be covered?
Correct.
Okay.
And the other thing that the law does state that I think we got cleared up was the Vegas, the Las Vegas incident is the only one that, prior to this law or a resolution being enacted, that they will, that they can file claims on.
What happens if they're helping someone in California? Because didn't you see it says-
They're already covered. They're already covered, yeah.
And how much is this going to cost us?
We don't know yet.
Okay, so we're not voting on this, you're just presenting it?
No, it's voting. We have to submit it to the company, our insurance company for them, and then they'll let us know.
Before they can decide.
And we have to be in line with the law?
Correct. Well, there's, Lloyd, you want to take that one?
No, it is optional. It's optional. The city has to adopt a resolution to buy into this program. It is not required by the law, the law allows it or enables it.
Do we have any idea how much it's cost other cities? So we have to approve the resolution to find out how much it costs?
That sounds familiar. I don't, I think it's a great idea, and I think it's tremendous, and I think it encourages, it's another good Samaritan law, and I would hope that any officer in any town, anywhere off duty is witnessing someone with a health issue and they know CPR and no one else does, or if there's a fire and, you know, you've got a fireman off duty and he wants to get in there and help, it'd be nice to know that he's, if he gets hurt in the process, he's going to be covered. So I think in spirit, it's terrific. I just, I don't know, the only thing I take leverage with is voting on something, we have no idea what it would cost, what the limits would be on it and so forth.
We can, I suggest that we get the resolution, we'll submit it, and then we can get the quote, and we'll bring it back and let you know what the cost is going to be.
I would prefer that. We can make it quick. It doesn't have to be another hour presentation. We did bring it back, we vote, boom, we're done. I would-
If I'm not mistaken, and I'm going to put Cherie on the spot here, but I'm pretty sure we've already got our quotes for this year, the final quote, so this will probably is already absorbed in that for this coming year, would be my assumption, because we've already got our quotes and our budget is based off of those numbers. So I would say there will not be an increase this year, you could potentially see it next year. It's an assumption, but we do have our final numbers from CSAC already.
So what does that mean?
So there wouldn't be a cost this year?
Well, we wouldn't, we, okay, we don't know the cost, but for next year, but we already know that this year is included, and all by doing this, all we're saying is yes, count us in.
Yeah, it's a voluntary program to opt in.
But that's counting us in.
So we could say for next year, we could ask for the pricing if we're in this program or out of this program, and then we could include that in the budget presentation for next year?
And then, and so likewise, if later when we, you know, get a concrete idea what the costs are, if it's, you know, too costly or something, we can always, since it's voluntary, we can always opt out of it, too, in the following year. But we've just got to kind of get to that point, so, yeah.
Can you take a benefit away like this, if it's part of workers' comp?
Well, it's a, it's a resolution and it's an option.
But once it's there, is it still optional?
If you have the power to adopt it, I don't see why you couldn't later adopt a resolution taking it away.
Okay.
So question, Lloyd, is there a, there's a clause in here that says specifically that you're happy with, that if they were, because you made a presentation the other night talking about everybody moonlighting and doing this and going to areas where the pay is twice as high and the benefits are great, and people at law enforcement and firemen, everybody is shuffling around to, you know, economically do the best they can. I want to make sure that if they're doing one of these things with somebody else and they're employed, and oh, by the way, they're, you know, even if they're off, but they're trying to help their compadres in another city, right, that if something happens that we don't get, I mean, so is there a clause that says this?
The language is that it does not apply, for it to apply, they cannot be acting under the immediate direction of an employer.
Outside the state.
Period.
Right. So if they're outside the state, you know, hoping to invoke this, but they're working under the direction of an employer, like the chief said, some moonlighting job out there, yeah, exactly, then it does not apply.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? Any public comment, discussion? Okay, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, next item is number seven. Authorization for the city manager Ron Strand to sign the notice of completion for the senior center parking lot rehabilitation project for the city clerk to file the notice of completion and the city staff to release retention in the amount of $10,040.98 to the contractor Griffin Company within 30 days after recordation of the notice of completion. Lauren?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, city council members, this is just a simple administrative item of filing a notice of completion for the completion of our senior center improvement project. What we're, what we're asking the council to do is authorize city manager to sign the notice of completion, authorize the city clerk to file the notice of completion for recordation, and then to authorize city staff to release retention in the amount of $10,040.98 to the contractor 30 days after the recordation of the notice of completion. This is a, the dollar amount is included within the amount that the council had a prior authorization for, so there's no additional money that's involved here, no additional funding.
Any discussion from council, questions? Any discussion from the-
If you said it correctly, Lauren said it was a senior center project, this is a senior center parking block project. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I apologize, her.
Okay. Did you want to say something? Okay. All right, any other public comment? Okay, a motion?
I move, we approve this.
Second. Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is item number eight. Resolution, the city council of city Ridgecrest to approve a grant of easement to SCE for transmission and distribution power lines overhanging the city's Kerr McGee Parks properties and authorize the city manager to sign the grant of easement. Sir?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, city council, this item is to grant an easement, a 10-foot-wide easement to Southern California Edison to facilitate the relocation of the transmission poles that join the Kerr McGee Park. As you know, we are, we've embarked upon a federal grant for widening our Ridgecrest Boulevard on the west side, and a necessary element of that, of course, is to re-
Down, down street.
I'm sorry, what did I, did I?
You said Ridgecrest.
Oh, pardon me, I'm getting way ahead of myself here. The poles, of course, have to be relocated in order to widen south down street. So the conductor that is on the most westerly side of these transmission poles will overhang the private property, and so Southern California Edison wants that airspace easement over those properties in which the westerly conductor will overhang. So we've had Wildan and their right-of-way agent working on preparing the legal descriptions and plat maps. They've coordinated with Southern California Edison's right-of-way agent, and they've perfected the language for the grant of easement. It's per the requirements of Southern California Edison. So all that's left now is for the city council to take the action to adopt a resolution approving the grant of easement and then to authorize the city manager to sign the grant of easement.
Okay, any questions from council?
Do we have all the other easement properties on the west side?
We are working on that on the west side. We have all the easements on the east side. The west side, we have the senior apartment complex, the school, and there's Akapur, Mr. Akapur, I think is his name is, there's three parcels.
We don't have his.
We've got the letter, the offer letter that's been prepared, and I think our city attorney, our city attorney's office is reviewing that letter, so we're about to issue those letters to those property owners.
So even if we approve this tonight, we can't yet move the poles?
No, sir, no.
How much longer do you think it will be before we, we obviously can't move them till we have approval?
It's only been 40 years whatsoever.
Yeah, what are we waiting for?
Six months, right?
Yeah, no, I understand. No, I-
Well, I would have thought when we voted yes on this before, and we put the gavel down to make this happen, it would cover all of the little minutia that goes with it, but maybe it's me.
Well, this is, this is-
Additional minutia.
This is a grant of easement from the city.
Okay, I move, approval.
Is there any discussion from the public first?
There is. Mike Neal, just one quick thought strikes me, that portion of the ball field where the field fence comes closest to the road, if you were going vertically up, do you know how much space between the furthest west power line would be and that fence, you know, just like the off chance, some odd event, a line comes down, would it end up striking the fence and electrifying the whole fence line or not? But do you know what that distance is with this easement?
Yes, we've done a survey, of course, to, a precise survey, field survey, to determine location of city facilities relative to where the Southern California Edison's line, poles and lines would occupy, and there is clearance there. The Southern California Edison was very concerned about the location of the lighting and the fencing there, and what they look at is what's called swing and sway of those conductors during a wind event, and there's a certain space requirement that's required for that swing and sway. And their design team has determined that the location of the pole and the conductor will not have any interference with the city's facilities.
Okay. And just while we're on the down street and I'm up here, when is the paving going to get done on downs on the east side over there?
We've scheduled July 14th as the paving date. And the purpose is the materials that we're using are very temperature critical, and we wanted to make sure we had a very optimum weather condition to ensure that we could have a good-
It was 102 today.
July or June?
I'm sorry.
July or June?
What did I say?
You said July.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought it was June.
Forgive me, I'm just hurt.
Oh, my gosh. Trying to give you a heart attack?
I am so sorry. Please forgive me, I'm sorry. No, June 14th, forgive me.
Okay, so I can tell all those people that are groping about it not being done to just wait another week?
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Please vote. Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item. Discussion of proposed action to remove requirement for the full median on Drummond Avenue from Down Street to Inyo Street. Lindsey?
Yes, just a second. So we have had a discussion before about, there is, there was an agreement passed a couple of years ago to reimburse the building of a median on Drummond with traffic impact fees from the development along that area. And during the infrastructure committee meeting on May 23rd, majority of the committee, not unanimous, voted to recommend that the council remove the requirement to build a full median on Drummond from Down Street to Inyo Street for the development of Track 6908. As I mentioned, this median was to be paid for using city funds, the traffic impact fees, to reimburse the developer who would have the work done. Majority of the committee feels at most a partial median to prevent left turns into the gas station would be adequate for the time being. The committee also felt that taking proper care of the existing medians needs to be a priority. I believe staff has a presentation on medians, and then I have one after theirs, so we'll let them proceed with their presentation. Do you need the clicker?
I'm sorry, I-
Nope, it's good.
I'm down a little more right. You notice I picked the long one this time?
Thank you.
All right, so, oh, Gary, send it, I need to push the button. All right, maybe. That one, there we go. So as Councilperson Stevens said, that what staff would like to do is talk to you about all the requirements for medians that are in different documents, as well as safety and other types of things. We understand completely that it's the council's decision, but we want to make sure that you're well informed before you make that decision. So ordinances, I'm going to read the highlighted parts, you're welcome to read the whole thing, but basically it says all street, this is standards, it's 14231, says all street improvements shall be constructed or repaired in accordance with standard specifications. 191 dot one, the subdivision chapters adopted to preserve, protect, and promote public health, safety, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare to implement the general plan of the city to provide streets designed to promote a safe traffic circulation system to ensure that the costs are borne by the subdivider and developers and in accordance with goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan. What this is basically saying is that, the ordinance are saying we have to last two, or that we need to look at the standard specifications and we need to look at the general plan. Public improvements, also part of the subdivision group, the minimum improvements which subdividers shall make or agree to make at the cost of the subdivider prior to- which subdividers shall make or agree to make at the cost of the subdivider prior to acceptance and approval of the final subdivision map by city council shall be, now, there's a long list, but number nine says traffic islands where they are required to control the movement of traffic. The first one we talked about was standard plans. So, the next two slides show the need for medians on all majors, and majors equate to arterials, and, but it grants council an exception where the planning commission and city council determine that a median strip for left-hand turn traffic separation is not necessary to preserve major street function, the secondary standards shall, all right, the secondary standards shall be applied. So, this next one here shows the standard. You notice where it says majors, that one is going to give us the exception, but if you look, it says that we need twenty-foot medians on all majors. This is the note that goes with one where it says that the planning commission and council can decide not to. So, I'm making sure that you all know that where there are exceptions to, to what the rules state. The general plan talks about West Drummond Avenue, um, under scenic corridors. It talks about it under major corridors, it's a major east-west corridor. It also states that major arterials are typically designed to accommodate up to six through traffic lanes, a parking transit right turn lane, and a center median with dual left turn lanes at intersections. So, if you look here, this is a map straight out of page six-six of the, of the general plan. It shows Drummond is a blue road. If you look at the legend down below, you'll see that blue equates to arterial. This is also out of the general plan, page six-twelve. It shows for arterials, this is the general cross section, you have twelve-foot lanes, you have sidewalks, you have bike lanes, and you have a median. Consistency is important. If you take a look, you'll see that to the left of the top picture, there's a median. During the section that we're, we're talking about now, there's no median. And in the next section down between Downs and Norma, there's a median the entire length. So, it, it's, it's important to have consistency so drivers know what to expect. Me, a turn lanes, this shows the turning movements into the store, both driveways and the new subdivision. This shows movements out of those. They both use the same center turn lane. So, it creates a conflict. Right now, you see double-double yellows. Double-double yellow means you can't turn across them. Even single double yellows mean you can't turn across. But as everybody knows from up at Starbucks, everybody does it anyway. While Ron and I were out looking at this before the, um, infrastructure meeting, somebody buzzed in right in front of us into the store across all the double yellow lines. All right, safety. The easiest way to show how medians enhance safety is to look at before and after of a median being installed. China Lake had a median installed in September of two thousand and fifteen. The four years prior, there was a hundred and seventy-five accidents. The, um, after the installation was put in, from then till now, there's a hundred and thirty-seven accidents, which is about twenty-one, twenty-two percent reduction. Now, this is new information. I'll make sure that, that, I'm assuming anybody that wants it can have it, but I'm assuming Councilperson Stevens would like to see the numbers and I'm, I will provide them, but I did not get them till four or five o'clock this afternoon. Lauren mentioned during the, um, infrastructure meeting that there's several different, um, new subdivisions coming in. This is where one of them is located. It's a forty-acre parcel at the corner of Mahan and Drummond. I would say that, uh, those going to the base coming out of here will go, probably go north, but anybody going anywhere else in town will probably go down Drummond, which will add to the current traffic.
Can you go back to your last?
I can, just one or more?
At the, at the infrastructure committee, you talked about the two new annexations.
This is one.
That's, that's one of the two, okay.
The other one is further south and I didn't think quite as applicable. So, median, this is what the planning commission and city council has currently approved. The planning condition, uh, commission, uh, conditions of approval, they told them to put in a median twenty-foot wide with left-hand turn pockets. City council, uh, it was appealed to city council, city council changed it, said, um, put in a median, um, and, uh, we'll take care of it out of traffic impact fees up to those collected by, for your houses. So, currently, the requirement is for them to put in a top-mounted, so in other words, mounted on the pavement instead of with a, um, footing like a normal curb and gutter would have, um, and it's mounted on the pavement. And I do believe it's required to have a concrete cap. Is that not correct, Lauren?
Yeah, I was supposed to have a stamped creep.
Stamped creep. So, this one will not add to the maintenance that, that Park and Recs is currently taking care of. I'm sorry?
I thought that that, um, requirement had been removed to have the stamped concrete put in previously.
Infrastructure.
Okay.
We discussed the, the maintenance would be lower because it would be totally concreted.
Or the cost is a lot more to do this?
They had to figure infrastructure was going to cost.
Stamp concrete, you know?
Stamp concrete is more than regular concrete, yeah.
The, the thing to remember, I'm sorry.
Versus dirt.
The, the thing to remember is, is that by having the stamped concrete, even if it's less expensive to not have it, then we don't have people have, having to maintain it afterwards, except minimally. So, um, anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, this shows the median, I did the best I could to match it up. The, um, you can see that it has, um, uh, breaks at Cimarron and Harriet. It will also prevent illegal left turns into the shopping areas and illegal U-turns altogether and allow traffic to enter the subdivisions on either side of Drummond. Uh, any entrance to the market will have to be off of Downs itself, um, unless you're coming east and then you can turn right, of course. Median cost, this is what we were discussing just a second ago. Cost to put the median is approximately a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred, that's pretty definite for approximate, but we got it off the engineer's estimate. Traffic impact fee balance is currently one point five million. Most of the cost of the median will be offset by traffic impact fees, forty-six homes equates to a hundred thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. In traffic impact fees that will come in by, when those houses are complete. Liability, since our general plan and standard suggests we should put in a median, we would say there's a higher li, probability of liability if we don't. And this is something that, that we thought was important to add. It's important that staff have consistent direction such as those offered by the city standards and general plans. When council decides to deviate from those two sources, it's hard for staff to be consistent and fair with all developers. In other words, what we're trying to say is, is that if, if you change this one, what are we supposed to do on the next one? Now, if you want to go in and change the rules in the general plan and our standard plans, then find a dandy, because we'll know what, exactly what to do, because we'll follow the, the general plan and the standard plans. But changing them on an individual basis makes it difficult for us to, to be fair and equitable. And with that, I'll just ask questions of both council and then council can ask for questions from the public. Oh, you may. I'm sorry, hang on, I'll just roll.
So, maybe it was presented, what is the total cost estimated to be to, you know, to the builder, the developer on this?
As you, as you read from earlier things, it should have been all, but council decided otherwise and council decided that they should be reimbursed up to their impact fees. So, impact fees are about a hundred, hundred and one thousand, cost is a hundred and thirty-four, thirty-five, so approximately thirty-five thousand probably will still be borne by the developer, is the way I read what council approved from before.
So, thirty-five K by the developer and the city would pay what?
The city pays from the development fees approximately a hundred and one of that. Now, development fee, I'm sorry, to, traffic impact fees, right, are very specific on what they can be used for. So, um, th, this is one of the uses.
It could also have been used for the expansion of Downs.
It most certainly can, could and can.
Yeah. I do have a few slides to show too after this, so we can still ask questions in just a minute or two, so, how do you? Okay, so I went out and took pictures of existing medians in Ridgecrest. And, and this is part of why I personally think that we need to consider, reconsider, and, and I would be interested in changing the city standards and general plan. So, these are current conditions. I frequently hear complaints from citizens about the conditions of our medians around town. You can see this is from French and China Lake, Drummond and Norma. There's debris along the medians as well as weeds in, in the medians. And these are very recent pictures, most of them from today. So, um, this is Norma, south of Upjohn, so you can see there's again weeds in the medians along the medians. This is Downs and Upjohn, so even where there's concrete, stamped concrete, there's still weeds being left, um, around, growing in between where the curb and the stamped concrete are, as well as along the actual median and roadway, um, on Downs and Upjohn and Downs and Ridgecrest Boulevard. These are the current medians that are on Drummond today. And this is what they look like as of today. So, the, you can see there's tons of brush growing in them, they are not attractive. I believe on that master plan diagram, it's called this a scenic corridor. I don't find that to be very scenic, um, but, huh? Yes, the fluffy clouds have been very pretty. But, so that is why I feel like we currently aren't taking care of our medians. And so, the idea of adding more to be taken care of seems, um, like a bad idea, so.
May I make another comment, please?
Yes.
Things to remember that Les has told me at least ten times since we've brought this subject up. It's not likely you will see another year where it rains like this anytime soon. So, the likelihood of it getting this far away i, is not real high. Second of all, um, Park, Park and Rec maintains most of the medians, um, in the city. They are fairly low-staffed, they take care of these as they can. One of the things that we've proposed is to go back to, um, concreting those that don't have watering system and plants in them already. We can work at that over the next several years with temporary employees, um, or, or maybe if council so deems, you know, we, we add another permanent employee to take care of it. I, I, you know, at that point, you know, we, we've only just started to discuss this. Uh, we put money in the budget to, to take care of, uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars worth of temp and concrete to take care of them this year.
This coming year, not this year.
This coming fiscal year.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yes, sir. Um, and if I look at these, am I upset by this? I, I would not argue at all. It, they, they are not in good condition. But right now, even if Parks has sprayed, they'd be coming up again with the amount of rain that we've had. So, it's very difficult to, to, to take care of them like, like council would like. But, and that's all.
Okay, questions from council?
So, uh, my concerns are, you know, looking and, at the current, uh, state of the median affairs here, that just continuing to build medians, um, puts us just further down this same path of, you know, it's, this is where we're at now and we're just progressing it even further, um, with Parks being in the situation it's in with budget and so, I, I didn't hear a, you know, a very good, you know, fix of it from you as far as, you know, where we're at on the-
Well-
-current budget, but where the current, you know, where the medians are currently and where we're going to end up just, you know, by continuing to build more medians.
Well, first of all, I would, um, like to disagree. The, the, if you go back two slides, maybe one slide, that one, you notice that the curb, the curb has some, some weeds in it, but most of the concrete doesn't. Most of the weeds you'll see are to the left of the concreted one, not all, but most. Uh, like I said, the curb and gutter, uh, you know, basically it's got dirt where the two come together and the weeds are growing there. If, if we concrete the median, which is what's required on, on this current one, I, like I said, I believe, um, that will help. If we go in and concrete the ones that don't have, like I said, don't have, uh, plants growing, plants and trees growing in them, and that, that will help as well.
So, I would, you know, put this right back at you and disagree.
A little closer.
I said, I'm going to put this right back at you and disagree wholeheartedly because I live there and right off of Drummond and for years since the medians were built have seen this same type of, you know, environment. Then I see our, you know, city guys out there working on it and it's usually a slow process to, you know, for them to clean it up. So, and I understand their point, you know, um, as far as, or their position as far as, you know, where they're at with it. It's limited number of, uh, staff to fix it or to get out and do the jobs and, um, so, and it, it's not just because of a single wet year, so I, I, I think it's a, it's a dilemma that we've built ourselves into and we are currently at a crux with it and so.
And again, if council wants to change the rules, we, we don't have any problem with that at all. It's changing them on an individual project basis that, that we are cautioning you against.
I've got several comments. Number one, I was the non-majority at the infrastructure committee, but I wa, I want to say several things. Number one, I agree with Barr, this has been an unusual rain this year, although a lady earlier said that maybe it's the new norm, that would be kind of nice when it, but anyway. One reason why the medians are looking as bad as they are right now besides the rain is I believe we pulled a couple of Parks and Rec employees out of Parks and Recs and put them on the, uh, slurry machine, is that correct?
They did.
So, they've been short a couple of people.
Although they, just to be completely correct, they were replaced with temps, but temps never work as well as, you know, trained employees.
Right, and I, I'm all in favor of going through and, and doing the stamped concrete. A question I have is, when our street sweeper goes around, he can't sweep the medians, can he? Because he'd be going against traffic, which is, of course, we can't sweep half of Ridgecrest Boulevard because we have those bull belts. Now, the developers still, whether or not we put this, these, this median in, the developers still going to pay their impact fees, is that correct?
That's, absolutely.
Okay. At the challenge of the developer, there he is, I drove, uh, since the last, since the infrastructure committee meeting and today I've driven, uh, that section of Drummond six times. And ironically, every time I drove it, there was four other vehicles on the road at one point or another between Downs and Mahan. I thought that was funny that there, every time I saw four vehicles, which isn't a lot. So, I'm not sure any other areas in town where we're going to have another median put in from a developer. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's some places there are, but I can't think of any offhand. So, I'm, I'm not sure, especially since you pointed out the part, the fact that said that, um, council can waive a median. And I understand your consistency and I agree with your consistency, but we can- but we can always go back and put this median in at a later date. And now are we recommending a partial median by the commercial property there, Lindsay, or?
So the existing resolution was drafted for full removal, but my understanding is we could modify it if we wanted to add, have the partial there to block the gas station.
And I've talked to a few people that live up in that area. And every one of them were against the median, by the way. I questioned Chuck when he said he surveyed everybody and they all agreed, they didn't want it. But I've talked to some that do live up there. And every one of them I've talked to don't want the median at this time. My feeling is, is we can always put it in down the road as traffic picks up, as we get these annexations and as both his subdivisions fill up. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more traffic there. So I've kind of.
You've changed your mind?
Changed my mind, yeah. At this time. And I think the fact that it says the council can vote to remove them, I feel that covers the general plan and the other rules.
One quick question. It does say council and the planning commission? It does not say or. Now, I understand that council has overall jurisdiction.
We have veto power over the.
Yes. So that's why I wasn't overly worried. I was just kind of talking backwards to Lloyd here.
So maybe the only change we need to change is take out planning commission, say council has waived.
And/or.
And, yeah, well, no, we don't want and/or because in the planning commission you can vote not to do it and we want to do it.
Right.
So.
But that's what happened, I believe, initially, right? But.
Yeah, it got modified, it got modified by the council.
The council was the appeal body on a planning commission action. So in my view, the council would be modifying its own action.
So we could, right, we're modifying our own action.
Exactly.
If we change this. And my feeling is we can always go back and put it in. I mean, we have those development fees in a separate account.
But.
I'd like to see more than a hundred thousand dollars a year in the budget from that. But we may want to use a bunch of that money for Downs, the west side of Downs too.
What I would say though is that having that, if we do add the partial median, that's not in front of parcel sixty-nine oh eight at all. So we would, I would be only for that if we use the traffic impact fee fund money for that.
Right.
Okay.
I agree. And I think it should go from the west side of Downs down to the end of the commercial property. That's as far as it really needs to go.
Yeah.
And.
I think you had, I'll go back.
I'm not, I'm going to ask the chief. Drummond is basically a residential street in that area. It's legal to make a U-turn on a residential street, isn't it?
Correct. Correct. You can make it a U-turn on residential, not commercial, business property. You can't.
Right.
I would make one suggestion that the median go beyond the commercial property down to, hang on, I don't remember the name of the street.
Turnoff into the subdivision?
Harriet, down to Harriet, thank you. Oh, it's right there, isn't it?
I think majority of the people that you surveyed were probably in that Harriet loop. And they don't want to be restricted on making a left turn out of there.
And I'm not suggesting that happen at all.
Okay. So you would stop just shy of Harriet?
That's correct.
Basically where your white line goes to.
If you go, I don't know, two or three beyond where it shows the construction map? No, keep further beyond. There, no, no, you're going backwards. Can you go forward, please? There. If you take a look here, you can see where it would normally end at Harriet. So I would suggest that you put it in from the, going clear to the right-hand drawing. You see where it tips off, where the tip ends there? I'm sorry, I don't have, does anybody got a pointer? Yeah. Right there, yes. I suggest that you build that section because it provides for the left turn lane either direction.
That good?
Yes. If that's the direction council's moving, then that would be what I would suggest be the least that you'd want to do.
And I think that should come out of traffic impact fees. That's all I got to say.
Quick question. You haven't decided who's going to build it. Is it going to be built by the developer?
Yes.
And reimbursed, I'm sorry?
I think it would be built by the developer and reimbursed with the traffic impact fees and not as the development is sold, but.
Existing. First of all, that property isn't even, I mean, that median isn't even by his property. Well, I guess the last little bit is, but most of it's not even in front of his property.
Which is fine. I just, but it just needs to be reminded it has to be with prevailing wage.
If we did it.
No, if anybody did.
The other option is just to not do any median right now. The other option is to not do any median right now. We don't have to do the partial from.
You're correct, but I would more strongly, seriously strongly, I'm sorry. I'll wait a second.
I wanted you to finish because we couldn't hear.
That's fine. What was suggested was is we could just not put any in. And I would seriously more strongly object to that. Did that come out all right? Only for the fact that then you're going to have people trying to make left turns with more traffic and there's going to be people still diving into the market. And that's dangerous. There needs to be a separation for that. And I would suggest that, you know, doing the end piece there provides safe left-hand turns and prevents that cross flow across the double-double yellows that are already there.
So has there been a traffic study or a safety study done?
I can't tell you about accidents right there. I can tell you between.
To allow, to help, you know, determine whether or not, you know, people could safely make a turn into the second entry into that business park. I know when you first come through the intersection heading west on Drummond, that first entrance would be questionable. But that second entrance where it comes into the backside of those buildings, has anyone done any kind of a study to determine whether that would be illegal and safe? You know, because otherwise you're limiting, I think, on that business to on traffic flow in and out of the business. They've only got, now they got options to, you know, stay in the left lane and hang a, you know, go south on a.
Now, again, the thing to think about is anybody that's diving across is either coming west on Drummond and diving in, or they're coming, I'm sorry, south on Downs and diving in. Either one of those can very easily go down Downs a little further and turn into the market.
Or if they're going north on Downs, they'd.
Yeah, they have to.
They'd have to make a U-turn.
And they do that anyway.
But I can see how all the residents west of that on, off of Drummond, they can easily come down east on Drummond and turn into the market. But to go back home, it'd be very difficult.
If you force everybody onto that street, it gets really congested on those two entrance points that you're talking about on Downs itself, on the north entrance and what would be considered on Downs and the south entrance there. When cars go to turn in there, and trust me, I've lived there for twenty-something years, when the cars go to turn in there, they have to slow down, kind of like the same interference that, you know, transpired by Drive Through Dairy. When you're in the left turn lane heading south on Norma and a car is making a left turn lane in front of you, or is making a left turn in front of you, if he's going to drive through Dairy, he hits his brakes mid-stride on a corner. So you've got people that when they're turning left out of, you know, heading west on Drummond and turning left and then going in what you would consider the legal manner to enter into that business park, they slow down. And so now you have, you know, other cars coming behind you that are, you know, piling up or slowing down. So I think it congests that area if we don't, you know, look at the possibility of, you know, freeing up, you know, if it's possible. That's what I'm questioning, the availability of people to enter if they're heading west.
I understand what you're saying.
That back road. They have a double yellow right now. Everybody uses it. And I can safely say I don't think there's any particular group in town that doesn't cross that double-yellow line on that second entrance.
The problem with it is, is traffic safety studies show that you've got to be so far away from an intersection when you have entrances.
Right.
All right? Neither of those, if I remember correctly, Lauren, help me. I don't think either of those entrances are far enough away to meet that traffic safety.
The second one is not?
I don't believe so because I think it's three hundred feet. So what you said was is that nobody can get out. Well, if you come out and you turn right going east, you can make a U-turn right at Downs.
There's no problem getting out of the facility.
Oh, yeah, you're.
There's no problem getting out of that business park. That's not what I was getting at at all. It's getting into and people are going, you know, west on that.
But there's two entrances, both on Downs, that will allow people to turn right. Now, if you think about it, there's no left-hand turn on Downs into the market.
Yep.
Because it's blocked by a median for safety reasons. So again, I would suggest that you run it all the way down to Harriet.
Can I ask a question?
And it's not up there this time.
Let's just take a five-minute break because there's so many conversations going on here. If we need to get the conversations done because it's, I know you all can hear what's going on between the council at this end. Do we need some questions answered from staff before we go further? Or, I'm not criticizing, I'm simply saying half a council isn't hearing what the other half is talking about and vice versa. Maybe we don't need a five-minute break, okay?
You realize that if staff objects, you guys go do what you want to do anyway, okay? But, well.
Bard, if there's no median, there's going to be a center-neutral lane that traffic from either direction can get in to turn, correct?
No.
No?
No. You can't have that because then they end up head-on. And especially when they're both trying to turn left. So what there will be is there'll be, just like it is now, there'll be a left turn lane with the double-double yellows to keep people from crossing, which doesn't, but that keeps them from crossing. And then they'll be, you'll be able to get into what you're talking about a little further up when you get to Harriet and to Simron.
Do you think that would work because you're over there?
Well, people will have to abide by the double-yellow line or they don't, you know, until, I mean, that's set up to, you know, govern safety. But the median itself is going to definitely stop people from turning in there. And other than that, it's not going to serve any other purpose other than to stop people from turning in there.
Let's make a distinction. In a commercial area, you can make a left turn over a double-yellow line. You cannot make a left turn over a double-double yellow line. The double-double yellow line is supposed to be the same as a median. So the fact is now technically there's a median there with a double-double yellow line.
Right.
And they're breaking the law by doing that. Is that all right, Jen? I can make a left turn over just a double-yellow line to get into a driveway.
Correct, into a driveway. And then where we're talking about here by Sage Mart, it's quad, it's double-double.
Two double-yellow lines.
Yeah, you're not supposed to cross that to turn in there, just like Starbucks, but it happens.
A lot.
A lot.
But so I would back up because the prevailing wage requirement was something that is what I've just heard here. We haven't talked about that before. So in light of that, and if we're using traffic impact fees, I would say that we would move forward with the resolution as it's written right now. And if staff wants to come back with a project to do the median later for the gas station.
You're talking the partial.
Yeah.
Partial median.
Because there's no point in making the developer build it if there's no prevailing wage savings.
So, yeah.
There's a huge difference, actually. The, if we have to design it and hire a consultant to design it, et cetera, it's considerably more expensive for us to do it than for have the developer because the design's not included in prevailing wage. It's only when you're working out in the field, parts of it are. But there's only prevailing wage when you're out in the field. So it will cost us considerably more to do.
It would, okay.
I've been trying to ask some questions and I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt because I have a few questions I don't understand. If the idea that our medians look terrible is one of the reasons for making these changes, I think it's a false idea of the fact whether the medians are there or not is a separate issue compared to how they look. Let me ask a simple question on that. If we use traffic impact fees, or may we use traffic impact fees to clean the medians? Okay, if you can't do that.
Can I explain why so that you know? You cannot do maintenance using traffic impact fees. We checked with the attorney before we started and concreting them is not maintenance. It's construction.
I knew that, that was why, because some people have said to me then, what are you doing that for if you can't, if you can use that money? And so I wanted it out in the public to understand. Okay, the second question. The idea of, I live right where you live. And if nobody hears me say this, I have crossed that double-double. I don't know how many times to go into that market. I see it, I see it all the time. You see me do it?
I confess.
Okay. All my neighbors do it. I've seen it. It scares me sometimes and it scares me even more when I'm sitting down at the second one to go in by the block wall because people are trying to get in to get past me. Okay, so if one part of it is legal and the other part isn't, all I can say is that people are going to continue to cross it unless we're going to have somebody there saying, you can't do that, you can't do that, you can't do it, five tickets, you've lost your license. I'm being facetious here. But if I got stopped every time I do it, and I promise I'm not going to do it anymore, I hope. But I just, I just think that the idea that it's being, that the reason we shouldn't do it is because people are doing it. The reason we shouldn't put the median in there is because people are doing it. I think the median has to either go all the way or it shouldn't. I don't understand the difference between putting it partially. And how is, that is not, I don't think, a burden of that property, that developer because it is not, he's not developing that property. The median should come out of traffic impact fees.
First of all, I don't think anybody's arguing that the median should come out of traffic impact fees. It should come out of traffic impact fees.
Okay, I thought we were going to put, ask the developer to do it.
No, we were going to have the developer do it, but reimburse them with traffic impact fees.
Okay.
And it's been suggested immediately as opposed to as the houses were built. Again, this is council modifying council's decision. So that was that. The going down partway or all the way, it's traffic safety all of the way, all right? However, where is it more needed for traffic safety? So if you're going to say no to the rest of it, I would still suggest that it's important that you do it over the first block.
Let me ask another question. The idea that. I had asked, Lauren, I had asked Lauren to explain to me what was the issue with this because I was trying to see it from staff's point of view without being distracted from the other points of view because I'd already heard all those. And I wanted to see what staff had to say. And my concern is that if we have the ability to change everything because it needs to be, then we should have rules that this is, under these conditions, these can change. We will not demand this under these conditions. Either the rules apply to everybody or they apply to no one. I think there has to be a consistent ability for staff to know. And so if we change the rules all over, then I don't have any problem with that. But I do have a problem with saying, well, this is not, this is different. So let's not, let's not make this happen. Well, this is different, so let's not make this happen. Either we have rules that are consistent or we don't.
And I can't argue that because that was my last slide. Exactly what I said on my last slide.
Thank you.
But this is the first time that this has ever come up too.
Well, here's, okay. If we have something. If we have something, you know, even in our new guide we're putting together and so forth, you know, Mr. O'Neill spoke up here, and we're trying to work on this guide and a website to make all this stuff. And then, there's been a lot of emphasis, and I agree with the fact that any place where we can, in fact, make it a little bit easier on a developer, where we do legally have the ability to waive something without causing a complete ripple-down effect with all, every other builder, like Mike said, this is kind of a...he doesn't see another application where this probably would come up. I think you said, Mike, it's kind of a unique situation. I mean, you know, if we had something in the big guide that ends up saying that any time we have some flexibility to do something, and it would come before the body to look at it, and if, you know, Jed, and if we come up with a situation where there is some leeway on this, then we're allowed to take some leeway. I just...here's the thing. I've driven that thing, too, like you, Mike, and I drove it today 10 times, too. And you're driving along, and it's not just...Peggy, it's not just this one part of ugly. We have ugly all over town, we really do. We got ugly all over town. And that median is ugly. It's flat ugly. I don't care whatever it's ugly. We just showed a picture, I drove with this, weeds every which way. And I don't believe the idea that just because we had a rainy season, we've got weeds, we've got trash that builds up along these medians. You know, I was just in Bakersfield today, and, you know, I understand, you know. But to me, if you're going to have...I understand the requirement for...that medians are mainly for traffic control. However, if a median is not required by virtue, you know, an absolute strong mandate... I mean, everything else is mandated. Everything else is mandated. If we have a little wiggle room, whereby, gosh, we have...we don't have to do it, I think the medians...I don't think it's necessary. I drove along there, and it's like, ugly, ugly, yuck, trapped in this, and then you get past that ugly median, and, boy, it's beautiful. It's like, man, this looks like I'm living in a nice city. How about that? Wow, beautiful. Ugly, ugly, beautiful. Beautiful, ugly, ugly. I don't want any more ugly. I only want any...you can't maintain it, and we're not going to be able to maintain it, okay? We've got a budget problem, we have a staffing problem, period. To me, if you can't tip the waitress, you've got no business eating. If you can't weed-whack your medians, you ain't got no business building them. If they're required by law, then we put the dang things in, and if we don't, we don't do them. I say we do none of this median, because I've been driven that thing, and I don't care what all the books say. If we have the leverage to do none of it, I say we do none of it. And if we find later that there's a real problem, then we'll put the low median back in, okay? That's it. That's my opinion.
I don't have any problem with that, except that I want to be able to have a reason why to do this, better than the fact that they're ugly.
So, are you saying that maybe we should have a look at the current guidelines and general plan?
Well, unless the driveways are all located on Drummond, the idea of traffic safety and preventing left turns into driveways, they're going to put brakes at every single one of those roadways or driveway entrances, so you're not doing much for preventing left turns, traffic safety, because you're braking at the median in each one of those spots. So, to me, it doesn't make sense to only do it, because our general plan had a cross-section that's put in every other city's general plan. That doesn't mean that we follow it. Our general plan also has a cross-section in there for Bowman that's physically impossible. So, I don't think that's a reason...
We tear down the old Walmart building, you could put it in.
Yeah, or, yeah. So, but...
That's part of it.
Yeah.
I know that we've got Chuck out there waiting to speak.
Right.
So, let's give him the opportunity, and then let's see if we can learn something there, too.
Good to go? Okay, I'm Chuck Brullen. I'm here today 10% for IWB construction, 90% as a citizen of Richcrest, so. We had the infrastructure meeting, and the points brought up by staff are the same points that we had tonight. Safety concerns for making left turns. They're allowing left turns, basically, as a design, out of every single street, anyway. Consistency to the general plan. I sent an email to Lauren today, and on Richcrest Boulevard, we don't have any medians. And it was...the answer was that the existing businesses didn't want any. That's not consistent to following a general plan. Even if it was out just in front of the businesses, if there ever was a need in this town forum meeting, it would be from Mahan to Downs on Richcrest Boulevard, which we didn't do when we did our own project. The concern of liability, it goes back to...there's a few places in town. You have Starbucks, even at Lost Floors. Cops let you make a left into Lost Floors, otherwise you'd have traffic all the way down to Home Depot, dropping kids off. And really, Jed's already gone, but my question is, is like, how many wrecks have we had at that? You know, what are we doing to help out the citizens by putting this in? Are we...I mean, are there a bunch of accidents there? I certainly know it's not going to help the businesses. I don't encourage going over that double-yellow. But you bring up a great point, especially with that bus stop. When that bus stops there, in front of that bus stop, in front of Takeri and Bernardino's, and people are trying to turn in, because you can't make right turns in there, because the parking... Literally, you're going to shut this business brutally down. And we're talking, unless we have a bunch of accidents, like I said, I've lived here for 40 years and never seen one there. And what are we actually trying to accomplish by putting any median at all in there? But anyways, I just want to go through, so I asked, you know, again, I sent an email out, why we don't have medians on Richcrest Boulevard, and it's Lauren stated that the business owners didn't want them. And although I think that's a good decision, but that shows terrible inconsistency right away, you know, on projects that we're doing within our own...Do you got something to say on it?
Well, I just wondered if I could answer that one, please, while you're talking about it. Lauren's absolutely right, the business owners didn't want them, but didn't go far enough. Council decided then not to do it, and council has the ability to do that. So, it's completely consistent with what's stated, that council or the planning...and the planning commission can decide no, and they did.
Okay, and I like it. I think it's great. I think we need to do a lot more of that. But, I mean, when you're talking about consistency to the general plan, we've already bucked that. And we have, out in front of Southern California Edison or PG&E, we don't have a median. There's numerous places where we don't have medians. Carriage Inn on Drummond. Obviously, we don't have one in front of the school district, I mean, the new school. So, there's countless, and on our own project, we don't have it. So, you know, even if you were talking about specifically where the businesses are, there would be no reason for, you know, if you believe that these are for safety, to not have it on Richcrest Boulevard from Downs to Mayan. But it's not necessary, you know, in my opinion. And then, you know, projected date on when Drummond median, west of mine that is up here right now, was going to be cleaned. We didn't have an answer to that. Why the new school wasn't required, it says, you know, and I don't...Lauren can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, we have no jurisdiction over schools when they put schools in. I mean, they don't have to follow the city standards, they don't have to do anything, which, to me, I did work on Lost Floors. And I had to come down and had to do traffic plan, and I had to pull encroachment permits, and I paid for them. So, if something's changed since when I did Lost Floors, then, you know, but as far as I'm concerned, DSA controls... They do control all the plan check on the site, they control the plan, you know, all the inspection. But they're required to follow our public right-of-way standards, is what I believe. I'm going to do further research on that, because I think they know that they were supposed to as well, and I think you know that they know that. Collision data on Drummond from Downs to Mahan, I requested that, couldn't get it. Same data on Richcrest Boulevard from Norma to Mahan, I couldn't get that.
So, I just...he said there's been 12 since August 1st of 2001.
So, on...
That's on Drummond from Downs to Mahan.
From...okay.
And then, from Downs to Norma was 24. But the traffic difference is about 5,000 per the last traffic study between Downs and Norma to... I believe Bart can correct me if I'm wrong, it's about 1,800 on...
It's about 1,800, but it's 5,800.
Yeah, 5,800 between Norma and Downs, and then 1,800 between Downs and Mahan. The other ones I didn't look up, but you should have called me.
Okay, yeah. No, I've been busy. But anyway, so the reason...my reasons for removing the median, again, all of these, other than the one where... And also, Mr. Strahan and I, we know the agreement that we weren't going to put stamped concrete in there, and when, you know, we weren't going to do it, we were going to put DG in there. I've talked to him several times about it. It was going to be paid in full, and it was also going to be paid when we did the project, not as the impact fees came in. So, you know, you can ask him that, that we've had numerous conversations, but that's our last understanding. As a matter of fact, when we had that, was actually at the Sage Mart, getting gas, talking to him about exactly what we were going to do. But anyways...
And you're happy with that?
What's that?
You were happy with that agreement?
No, because I don't think we need them, I don't want them.
Okay, I thought you said you do it.
And we've already bucked the consistency, as far as, you know, we've done it, and for good reason. I thought it was really good reason that Lauren said that none of the businesses wanted the median. That's a fantastic reason. I don't think we should have it there, either. The 2011 Measure L feasibility study that you guys have, the...out of 16 questions, medians are the...are dead last where citizens want to spend money. I mean...
But that was Measure L money.
I mean, no, just period. That was a study, that was a $30,000 study. It's 400 pages long of data that we should really be looking at, because it shows what citizens are looking and where they want to spend money. And that's just, you know, I read the whole thing, but that's the only two pages that pertain to what I'm pointing out. You know, it's not just me going to every single one of the neighbors that literally don't want it. I mean, I told a lot of guys, "Don't come here," because, you know, it just doesn't need to go there, but, no, you know, they don't want it. You know, they don't want it looking like this. I'm going to have to go clean this median up myself, because I've got open houses coming up, and they're never going to get cleaned, and I plan on doing it next week. I actually wanted to leave it like this, I figured before we did this, it might get cleaned, before we had this conversation.
If you had a thing like, you know, what Jim Gregory's got in front of the village with this beautiful, neat, narrow thing with AstroTurf and antique lights, that everybody...that number on that chart would go way up. But this is what we got here, is it still up? Yeah, that's what we got. Nobody wants that.
Jim Gregory had to submit that plan through the city, too, it would have been a lot different as well. It wouldn't...it would have been a whole different ballgame, on trying to get something done like that reasonably. But, so, and there is very little traffic there, and I don't think any of the...anybody has any problem moving around the streets. I mean, I know the gas station, you got the double-yellow, but, again, I haven't seen any issues when I drive there. And so, the 10% of me being here with my businesses, I don't want the median there, because every single median town, even the ones that have concrete, you still have weeds, you still have wind blow, you have pine needles. And it's like Mr. Martin said, when you drive by there right now, when you get past this median, you literally, hallelujah, it's beautiful. And you couldn't have said it better. And we're, you know, like you said, anyway, I'll just keep going through the...I got a couple more here, you know. Parks and Rec spends 66K a year maintaining these, as far as the budget. And we're, you know, we're going to youth sports, trying to generate some money. We should start with this type of stuff, and this is where I think staff needs to start recommending some of these things to council when they think that it's feasible to not be putting some of this stuff in. I mean, if we're out on money, we should...and perception's a big thing. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, and this is the type of perception that we need to change. We need to change some of this where we're just going to do it this way, even though it makes absolutely no sense, period. And I think you guys, as council members, depend on staff to give you some of these recommendations. You know, and then, and here's really, you know, the problem I have, and I'm glad these photos are up here. If you look at our general plan, and you actually understand how main arterial roads are supposed to work, the reason why you don't have a break in there at that is because the...at the time, Public Works knew how this was supposed to operate. There's not supposed to be a left turn there where they want me to put one in on my other development. You're only supposed to have turns at, you know, collector's streets where it goes all the way through. You know, to do a project like this, where you have a left turn on every single opening, is not consistent with what you're looking for as a design element for this type of traffic control. What you see right there is exactly what the general plan was looking for. What staff wants me to do right now is, and I've talked to a couple other civils, they don't do it anywhere. They do not...they don't go put in medians and have left turns on every single opening on a main arterial road. So, it's a lack of, you know...
Can I ask a question there? So, we are...we were requesting left turns on every single road?
Yes. For this grouping, yes.
Well, there's only like four roads.
Well, that's what I'm...I'm understanding that. I just wanted to understand, because I thought there was going to be just two.
But I would suggest that Mr. Ruhl and his campaigning for something else besides what we're discussing tonight, I'd be...we'd be, you know, he's...
Okay.
It's already been decided by council and the planning commission that there needs to be a crossing there. Both fire and police want a crossing there. He's agreed to put it in, in his third stage, and I don't think it's fair for him to be campaigning now for something totally different.
Well, I'm not campaigning for that. That is exactly what...if you look at...read our general plan.
I have, sir.
Okay, when you read our general plan, read the notes that say where they want the turns. I mean, it's right in there, I'll email it to you.
Sir, I understand what it says. And when fire and police both state that they want it, because they need to be...because it's too far around to get to your complex, then we're going to follow what fire and police ask us to do.
Right, but you've got to understand, when Arroyo was put in originally by George Bertrand, he wanted to put a left turn there. At that time, he...at that time, and they had the other development, this city, it doesn't matter if a new director comes in, this city knew that that was going to be development, and because of the fact that that's an arterial road, and that's the way it should be designed, they would not let him put a left turn in there. They made him go all the way down to Enio. That's the first street that you should be able to turn into, as far as everything I've read and the few engineers that I've talked to at other cities, even.
The point is, Chuck, we're off the subject now, you're on something else.
And we're not discussing that. I hear what you're saying, I mean, I'm good, I'm just saying that I wanted to point out all of it. I'm not...I don't...I'm not even discussing anything about a break. I didn't even mention anything about putting a left turn there. I'm saying, from what everything I read, this is what you would want on a main arterial road, if you're going to look at our general plan and go off the standards that our general plan recommend. And not just ours, but everybody else's, as far as what... And I don't think that's good for anybody, just like I would...I don't think it would have been good on Richcrest Boulevard. I don't think these medians are good in, you know, I mean, obviously, they serve a purpose in certain areas, but this wouldn't be one of them.
I have a question here. If we do what some of council has suggested, that we don't do anything for right now, what's the criteria in the future of determining that it must be done? Or it will be done, or it can be done, or it ought to be done?
I would suggest if there turns out to be more accidents there, then I suspected that staff would come back to council and suggest that we need to put it in.
I like the idea of suggestions, as Chuck had said, from staff coming to council or infrastructure, or whatever, and say, "Why not?"
One of the things that we would also suggest, though, if this is the direction council wants to go, that council suggests to staff tonight that they need to look at change, you know, making suggested changes to the general plan and the standard plans when we are redoing them? and the standard plans when we are redoing them. You realize staff isn't arguing with you at all about the direction you wanna go. Staff is suggesting that, that, that the ordinances, the general plan and the standard plans that are currently in place suggests that this needs to be there. Okay? Or states, you, you, um, uh, councilperson Wallace says, you know, if it, if, if it's not, you know, stated somewhere, well, that the ordinances state that we must follow standard plans, the ordinance state that we must follow the general plan. And both of them state that we should be putting medians in. Now, again, council has the exception to change that. And we said, said that several times. But we would also like consistency. So if you decide you wanna change it, let's change all, all of it. I'm not saying not change it tonight. I understand what you said earlier. You know, let's just change it so we don't do this anymore. And I would agree. But if you're gonna change it tonight, which is fine, tell us that you want us to move forward with changing it permanently so that we have consistency.
I think, um, we kind of have a consensus here, even if we haven't voted on that, what everybody's opinion. And Chuck, I'm not trying to cut you off here.
I, I, I'm done.
But, thank you. I do appreciate what you had to say. You taught me a few things. And so, I was gonna say a couple, but maybe it was more than a couple. But let me stay here. If we tell you tonight, we do not wish to do this and that we will look at it as the need arises again, I don't have a problem with that. My only concern is, I don't want us to change it tonight on everything until we've gone through committee and looked at it.
I don't know that you could.
Yeah.
But I don't think you can change, um.
Well, you had said about changing it tonight.
No, I, I was suggesting that you, you, you ask us to move forward with making a permanent change tonight, if that's what you wish. That's just direction to staff and you can do that at any time.
Can, can I ask a quick question? Because you said that cost would go up significantly. If we put delineators in those poles, like if accidents went up significantly, right there, but twelve since two thousand and one is definitely pretty low. If, if down the road, say, accidents increased, could we simply put in delineators without having to go through all that rigmarole of engineering design being expensive for us? Can, can delineators be installed?
We have the ability to do that right now, if, if, but there hasn't been, the twelve accidents weren't all at the market.
Right. So that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. So if, if it did become a problem, even a cheaper option than building a median could be delineators and we wouldn't have to go through all the engineering design, um, expansion.
That's true.
Okay.
I'd like to have. Is there any other questions? Is there any other questions from the public?
Yeah, not necessarily questions, just observations. From what I'm hearing about the proposed design for the median, it really doesn't sound like that it's gonna even do much, other than just cause something else you have to weed. So it's a little hard to see why it's needed at all. And if they're putting, if they're putting brakes in it at every single street, then what's, it's not preventing anything. It's just sitting there collecting trash and, and giving you something else you have to weed. So it didn't seem to be any point to put it in there at all. As far as, you know, consistency about this, it's gonna be a little hard to be real inconsistent because most major arterials already have medians. That I could only think of maybe if there's further development on Bowman Road down by Walmart and going out to East, that then, you know, there might be continuation of the median there. And if it's all commercial, then, you know, you, you might want that. But you're, it seems like your best option is to direct staff to look at changing the city code and just make medians optional on the street. And then you can decide if you wanna put a median in the street, it would, then you say, put it in. You don't have to go through this whole exercise every time. You say, when there's, there's some development or roads being built, you just put the road and then you, and people, you know, staff come and say, okay, well, do you want us to put medians there? And, and at that time, under the given conditions, then you say, no, we don't want one, or yes, we do. Just like kinda what you're doing right now. All the neighbors, you know, reported to say, we don't want a median in our way out there. And I appreciate the fact that, that you're paying attention. You're listening to them going, okay, let's not put a median there. The neighbors, the people that live there don't want it. So, you know, and all this talk about at the, you know, the Sage Mart and the turning, that's somewhat problematic, but any collisions there are, because people are turning and stuff, they're gonna be low speed collisions, fender benders and so forth. You're probably never gonna hear about them. And people have one fender bender, they learned their lesson and, and, you know, they figured out a way to avoid that. I mean, I've turned in there many times and, you know, yeah, you got two guys trying to, you know, make a left turn simultaneously and usually catch it and veer off or whatever, you know. So, so it, I thought for a while, maybe you might wanna put median right there by the shopping center, but it's a little difficult to do it and not impact their business. And I think, you know, most adept drivers can deal with it. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Dave Matthews. Um, first of all, I wanna say, I think I agree with the ma- what the mayor said a while ago, I believe, I understood her, that the, putting, putting in the median and the condition of the medians are two different issues. And I don't think they should be addressed together. Because, uh, first of all, I think that you should have a median at that point. Because, let me give you an example, a few examples. If you're going west on Drummond and you know you want to go to that gas station or the, that shopping center, you have the option of getting in the left turn lane on the east side of, of, um, what is it, Downs, yeah. And then making your left turn and turning into the shopping center. Same way, uh, coming south on Downs, you don't have to go on, to make a right on the Drummond and then swing across the double yellow line. You go further past the intersection and you can turn into the shopping center. But people are either not thinking of what they're doing, or they're lazy or something. They don't plan ahead. And they're crossing the double lines, the, the double yellows. I would like to see that portion, portion at least have a median. Make the people, make the drivers wake up. The same condition is, exists over there at Starbucks. Going south on China Lake Boulevard, they just have to go through the intersection and they can make another right turn into that area there, right behind Starbucks. Uh, they don't do it. Coming, coming, um, coming, uh, west on, uh, I forgot the name of the, what's that street now?
Ward, Ward.
Ward, yeah. They can get into the left turn lane at China Lake, make a left turn there and go into the same thing at Starbucks. People are lazy. And they need to wake up if they're driving vehicles. So I think you should put the median in. And then considering the cleanliness, let me give you a little history. Maybe some of you don't know. But, um, the developer here, it's been here forty years, he says, so that's almost as long as I've been here. He should remember that, I think, from China Lake Boulevard, south to, um, Upjohn, that used to be maintained, I believe, by the Bud Air manager, Fred Eytasch and his group. He, he, he had a group, I think, that maintained that. Now, it wasn't until the last infrastructure committee meeting that I found out why Charlon and his group stopped doing their project, Ridge Project. Apparently, the city decided not to insure them or whatever when they're out there doing that. That's a big mistake, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, if you're gonna have volunteer labor, at least you oughta be able to forfeit or, or come up with the insurance money. But the city decided to do away with that, so we don't have the volunteers out there. But, um, you could get back into a program there if you wanted to do the right ordinances in, in, or legislation or whatever. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other council comment?
Why couldn't we just put the little white poles, three or, you know, eight of them right there where the double yellow problem is? Why we have, why would we have to put in a big expensive median?
That's, that's what I suggested. But I said only if, because we've only had twelve accidents and that hasn't been all right there since two thousand and one. So if we see a sharp increase, then we could start to look at that. Would be my suggestion. But I did have a question because we talked about, he had asked about a center lane with, because we have a hundred and eleven feet of pavement.
It's an airport. It's an airport, Bard. My question is, why can't we have a center neutral lane? And, and people going either way, I know the head on, okay, fine. Why can't you have a, 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 a central lane? And then right there, it, it's your only two, your entrance and, and the two entrances to the place. You just do a little, you, you can use those little white things or whatever you wanna do, but keep a center lane. That, that road must be, it's enormous.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. I can, I think I got this one. The, the, the only place that you would have a problem is right at Downs is where you couldn't do it beyond Harriet to Enyo.
Enyo.
To Enyo, you most certainly could.
Okay. Cause I was, I was gonna say, cause Norma, it's, it does it at Norma. So we could do it in that section, so, to eliminate confusion. Cause I feel like, I know, there's a lot of confusion on Upjohn with the way it's striped, because there's enough width there for a couple lanes of travel, but we only have a single lane. And so people on that road are always trying to figure out where they're supposed to be driving in that huge swath of pavement. And so I think.
What if we had, yeah, the central neutral lane and then use the little white things to absolutely make it clean and sweet?
But that's, that is something we could discuss later too, right? Because we only, it's nine thirty almost, but we, I think that's a worthwhile discussion, but we can go ahead and, if we're ready, to make a motion on this.
Right. Is there a direction from council then?
I'd like to move, uh, I'd like to make a motion to proceed with it as written in the resolution that Lloyd drafted.
That does not include any medians at this point?
Yes.
Fine, okay.
I'm gonna vote against it because I think we need the median there.
It's not registering.
Nope, okay, he said roll call. It's not over. Mayor, please.
No.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Hayman?
Yes.
Bauer?
No.
Elvison decided to work. Three ayes, two noes, motion carries. With our noes, can I ask a question here? This still doesn't preclude us from looking at how we accomplish it later on. How we accomplish putting the median later on or some sort of delineation.
Well, I would suggest that, that, that the, not at this particular location, but that, that, you know, the, the five of you look at each other and decide if you want us to look at taking out medians altogether. Now, one, one council person can't say that, okay, because count, one council person cannot give staff direction. But the five of you cer- or the three of the five of you certainly can. Um, so if that's what you wanna do, just please let us know that that's the direction you want us to go.
Do you need an, an agenda item for us to ask you to do that?
No.
And I think you need to do that.
Yeah, I see two, three.
I think that's a.
At least three shaking heads, so that, that's enough for me. So.
I don't wanna have to decide the same thing every single time.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, I would agree completely, which is why I suggested that. But it also gives staff direction, consistency, and a way of dealing with all the developers the same way, which is all we're really asking.
That's what we're asking. Yep. Okay, finance.
We haven't had a, we haven't met since the, the special meeting.
The special meeting, yeah, okay.
No further.
All right, infrastructure.
We did meet and obviously what we just discussed was a major part of our meeting. We also discussed, uh, different options for some grant money that we gave staff direction on where to go for that. And, uh, we got one other thing. I can't remember what that was. Do you remember what else we did? That's pretty much it, yeah.
Okay, Parks and Rec and Quality of Life?
Yes. We met last night and it was a long meeting. We had the sports groups there. We are actually, um, to make a quick announcement, we are going to have another meeting next Tuesday, um, at five thirty. So note the change. It normally is at five, but this one is at five thirty. Um, to only continue the discussion on the sports teams because we needed some additional data that we did not have at the meeting. We also discussed, um, the li- a, a couple representatives from the Lions Club came, um, to discuss Penny Pool because, um, we had met with an engineer in town, Dale Grace, and he had proposed getting an engineering report on the cost of getting Penny Pool reopened, but only as it is, not with expansion or a therapy pool. Um, and he had estimated that would be fifteen thousand dollars to get an engineering, fifteen thousand?
Fifteen, one five?
One five. To get an engineering report. And, and that engineering report would be what you would go out to bid with. Um, so it wouldn't be a feasibility study. Um, but the Lions Club representatives, um, wanted to have a meeting with the school district, the hospital, and Saracose to make sure that their needs would be met, i.e. expansion. So, uh.
It wasn't the, um, clear that, um, what they wanted to see was an expansion of, you know, another swim lane and the aqua therapy, you know, center.
Right, that, that's.
In the event that we don't do that, then they're not interested in relinquishing funds toward the project.
That was my, that was what my understanding was.
My understanding of it, that they stated that they will not release any of their monies. They didn't want a part of it.
Right.
Unless it was.
Unless we put in a extra swim lane.
Satisfying all of those.
Right. If we were to do just the basics of, of.
Just get Penny Pool back open.
As is and keep it like that, th- they do not wanna be a part of that.
Who's they?
Uh, the Lions Club. They would not use their money.
That they have.
And they have like sixty-eight thousand.
He said he was hoping to have eighty thousand after this weekend.
Okay.
Is what his statement was.
I'd like to make a couple of comments about your committee. Number one, when I first came to town back when some of you weren't born, uh, the ballfields had four by eight plywood signs from a lot of businesses. And they paid for them to advertise on the, on the back fences. And that brought in money. Okay? I did not, when I, and I walked, and I walked all the ballfields the other day. And I don't think I saw any signs out there. And that would be, that'd be one way of bringing in revenue to cover some of the cost of, of maintenance.
They do allow banners on the back of the dugouts, um, for, I believe, what Mr. Patton told me was five hundred dollars apiece for the season. Isn't, isn't that what they, so they do.
Sponsored banners for my businesses.
And how many of do they have?
They had them on each of the dugouts that I saw.
I actually asked Chris about that and Chris said that they put them up there during the season and they take them down.
Oh, okay.
When the season's over. So they do allow them. Yeah.
Okay, so they do, they, they allow, but the, the team, the IWV baseball does that, not the city.
Okay, so they're not doing, they're not doing games now, so there's no signs up now?
Correct. He told me they take them down when the season's over to preserve them for next year, hopefully if that sponsor puts in.
Cause they used to be plywood and they lasted long. Cause, cause my youth group repainted them all back in nineteen seventy-two.
To the sports team.
Okay. Goes to the baseball.
And number two, I walked those fields.
Yes.
And they had a few problems, but nothing like was presented that night.
No.
Uh, the, the, now, I happened to hit it the day they mowed all the lawns, so the lawns were perfect. Cause they just finished mowing the lawns when I got there. But I was. But I was told they mow them every week, so I don't understand. He was saying that they have to play through tall, tall grass.
And they were not half-dead.
There were a few dead spots.
But they were not.
But, you're right.
Yeah, all the new grass.
So it was a little, it was a little exaggerated.
Yes.
Although, we were shown images that were taken pretty much directly after that last city council meeting. This, this is for, you know, the, the club president, but, that he took pictures, you know, right after that meeting. And there were some pretty, pretty good ruts and a few things that did need some attention, and apparently that was fixed in between our meeting, you know, the city council meeting, and that last.
Your walkthrough.
That last.
Your walkthrough, and I did a walkthrough, so.
I did the walkthrough, I think it was the next day.
Yeah, so by the time we did our walkthroughs as council members and went out and looked at it, there had been some policing up of it by parks. I will, I would like to, you know, make sure that that is clear, so.
But there were a couple, there were a couple spots where some water had, you know, rainwater had run, and they hadn't fixed those yet. And there were, there were a couple, there was a brown spot on two or three of the fields, kind of a circular.
Yeah, that was still there.
I think the big picture is that the, the, the ball dimes are, they're pretty nice.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there's a lot of money been spent in there, and, and they are, it's a, it's a nice facility. And we're going to have that extra meeting.
I just want to make that comment.
Yeah, and there's going to be a, a meeting on next Tuesday, an extra, uh, meeting, and so we're going to address some of these very issues again, and try to get that.
Because the, the dollar amount that the teams came wanting to pay was zero dollars for their fees. So, but what they asked of us was how, they wanted to know our exact costs, and we did not have that data. So we are going to have all the utility bills, and how many hours we spend mowing, and, and that information for the next meeting. So we did the pool, like I said, and then we also just did a brief update, because we had talked about the drapes and Freedom Park restroom previously at Quality of Life, and it was just updating that that was part of this year's budget. And those were the items that we had discussed. As well as Mr. Matthews, congratulations again on your great-grandson.
Didn't you change the location of next Tuesday meeting?
No. It is still over there at Kermit G, so.
Yeah, definitely, morning, seven, ten.
Yeah.
So, a question on, any, any changes that we want to make on budget as a result of our meeting next Tuesday? Is that possible? I'm asking council, so that wouldn't be.
Well, yeah, you can propose changes at the council meeting.
At the next council meeting.
So we could come, we could come as a committee, for the budget proposal will be on the nineteenth. So we could say, as a committee, before we approve the budget, what our committee recommends doing.
When they do the. When you guys have your council discussion before, you could give your committee report, and then if everybody agrees with you, and you guys want to amend it a certain way, we can amend it at that time before you approve it.
Budget changes at that point.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, because when we go into that meeting, they will want to know, and we're going to want to know, so that we can make.
Right.
Make final.
What I'm going to put in the, in the agenda, because I have to post it before your guys' next meeting, I have to have it before the next meeting, it won't be posted before your next meeting, but I have to have the budget. She's going to give me what it is right now, a draft budget with the seventeen thousand dollars from the fees, just like it was presented to you guys. And then if you guys come back and modify it after the fact, we'll change that when we approve it.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear one thing up on that engineer's estimate, so that, because you said it would be ready to go out for bid, that would just be a scope of work?
Right.
And then the estimate, so it would be close to ready to consider going out to get plans drawn up, so it wouldn't be ready for, it's not a full set of plans, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that? So approximately, if, if the fifteen hundred dollars is.
No, fifteen thousand.
Oh, that's, okay. All right, fifteen thousand, then, doesn't include the scope of work?
No, it's going to include a scope of work, and it's going to include an engineer's estimate with it. It's just not going to be a set of plans. If you chose to use the same engineer, then obviously he has all the takeoff work done, and you'll, you'd save money having him generate the, the construction plans, but that's just to get some sort of con, you know, number to see if it's feasible, because we, you know, that's, that's the start. And then if it is, and you wanted to add a couple things like solar, or what, some other things that we may want to add, you can start adding that, and he can give you engineer's estimates based on the ads. And then at that point, you could either send that scope to whatever architect or engineer you wanted to use, or you could choose to use the same guy that did the, um, scope of work and engineer's estimate.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, that's my report.
Youth advisory, obviously.
They are done for the year.
Okay, action?
September.
We, yeah. RECVB.
Uh, meeting next week.
Okay, economic development.
Our meeting is next week, but since the last meeting, we did go to ICSC Las Vegas, and you've probably seen in some of the newspapers, some of the outcomes of that. We met with both Holiday Inn and Marriott. They are planning on still moving forward. Hopefully, they, they, I think their estimate was they would be breaking ground near the end of this year, would be the idea for those. We had very good meetings with Panda Express, Chipotle, and Panera. We had met with them last year, so it was just continuing to meet with them, making sure they were finding sites in the city that they could potentially go to and make deals. The other one we met with was Dunkin' Donuts as well, and Raising Cane's, Wendy's, Popeyes. And I'm trying to, but we were busy nonetheless, and we had, it was a very successful trip, so we're looking forward to some new businesses coming in.
Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, other committees, boards, or commissions? Okay, then, city managers, well, do you have anything from Ron? Or anything you want to say, sir? Okay, future agenda items?
On that note, I'll say, remember, there's no July third meeting. You guys have decided to, okay, to cancel that July third meeting.
Right.
Okay.
I would like, as the last council, the last town hall meeting I had, I think after my first term, I would like to schedule another one again. I'd like some ideas from council, what we can discuss in one or two times. I think it's important that we do see if indeed, as was alleged, that we are not up with what the community wants. I want to know that. I would want, I appreciate Stan saying that to us, but I would like to know that from more than one person. And frankly, I don't know that we are or we're not, but the only way we're going to know is if we have one. So during the summertime, when people are not, I, so I'd like to have one in July and one in August. And if we can do it in July, if we can't, then we'll do August and September. I'm, I'm open to whatever, but I want topics. I want to keep it specific enough that we can accomplish something and general enough, so we can look at something that we may not have thought of.
Yeah, and we had talked about it shortly after I got elected, and we had scheduled one at one point.
We did.
Um, you know, talking about goals and objectives, what, what direction we wanted to head as a council. So I, I agree with, I think that would be a good thing for us to set.
I will not be here in July, at all.
All right, well, since it's going to be difficult to do one in July anyhow, then, with our meetings being canceled, let's plan in August. And could I, is there a committee that's appropriate, org, whatever, to begin the discussion?
So org would be scheduled to meet, and they just canceled their meeting for this month, so then it would be July, and you're gone, so.
I can take your.
I can take my place.
Spot.
City Org can still do it, I just won't.
But it was, is it the first?
It's the first Monday of the month, so that would be first.
First. July first.
We're leaving on June thirtieth.
Who is, it's, who's on City Org?
You. You.
Okay. That.
M and M.
How about the twenty-second of July?
For what?
For org.
Oh.
If we're not going to have it on the first, since we're not going to do it before the fourth of July, you will still be gone, correct, Mike?
I won't get back until about the sixth or seventh of August.
Is that okay with you, Wallace? Twenty-second, okay, so org will meet on the twenty-second, and that will be one of the topics, if there's any others that need to come up. And if anybody's got ideas, let us know.
Go to that.
Water or casino?
Let's not. Let's not right now, because we don't know where we are on some of those issues.
What was that?
I said water or casino?
Scratch that from the record.
You guys could have that on July third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I think we talked about July first, so, okay. All right, mayor and council comments?
Future agenda items?
I thought I did.
Yeah, no, I, I have one.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the city's been working with the Navy on the, this joint wastewater treatment plant since before two thousand and eight. We have been requesting an easement from the Navy starting around twenty-twelve, and detailed discussions regarding the easement have been ongoing since two thousand and seventeen. I guess the most significant aspects of the Navy easement have been negotiated, and the operational and management agreement, the discussions have begun and I think are doing well, so I understand. But I, I believe that in any business and in any venture, you have to have a, a due date for any kind of a project. I, I just do. And I'm not so sure we've set any due dates on this project, since we've been doing this since two thousand and eight, and it's almost two thousand and twenty. So I, I don't want to put any undue pressure on anybody or anything. I just think we either need to, you know, make a decision that we're going to do something jointly, and if not, then we need to do something, the city on its own. And I would like to say that, that the Navy easement and operational issues be finalized prior to December. That still gives us another six months, so that we can make a final decision regarding the location of the new wastewater plant this year in two thousand and nineteen. And I don't really think that that's, should stress anyone. I don't think it should, on the Navy's side, or our side, since Ron said at the last meeting that we're almost there. I, I just want to say that let's be there. And, and a worst-case scenario, absolutely drop dead, December, you know, of this year, and, and if we don't have a decision that's made, and this is what I've said, if you don't have a decision, I mean, if somebody said, you know, since two thousand and eight, and we're two thousand and twenty, and a final decision is not made, no action is, in fact, heavenly days, an action. The statement is that we don't want to have an agreement, we don't intend to have an agreement, and that's okay, right? I mean, that's okay, that's what you said, Bart. You said it's okay if y'all want to do this project, but you ask for consistency and whatever, and let's be so forth. It's okay. But I think from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty is enough time for these two parties to come together for a wastewater facility. This is not a NATO conference, and we're not talking about, you know, Iranian, uh, building nuclear weapons. It's building a poo-poo plant. And I think in that period of time, these two entities should be able to sit at a table and work out a few of the final details, and let's decide. And if it's not decided by that date, then the city takes it over, and we build the thing on city property and march forward. So that's what I'd like to put on the agenda. That we decide that we set an official date by middle of December, by that council, whatever the date is, to have this absolute latest to come up, to have this done. Now, that's what I'd like to be on the agenda.
Got it. Okay, is there any other mayor and council com, oh, that is, now it's mayor and council comments. Anybody have any? Okay, then we will adjourn. Thank you all.